2023 meeting of the Town of Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaFleau.
Here.
Mr. Scraby Tennis is excused in absent. Mr. Kahn.
Here.
Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Mr. Darpeno.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Ms. Strang.
Here.
Mr. Drescher.
Here.
Chairman Walsh.
Here, thank you. Okay, first up, we have the approval of the minutes from the March 13th, 2023 meeting that were included in your packet. Can I have a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McPartland for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
And second by Mr. Kahn. Any changes to the minutes? I have none. Nice job. Anybody have anything? Okay, hearing, no changes to minutes. All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or objections?
Sorry, I wasn't present for those, so I'm standing.
All right, thank you. All right, the minutes are from March 13th, 2023 approved. Next, we have a public hearing, a public hearing for 1851 Union Street, 1245 Roughner Road. And that's the Mohawk Golf Club for the average density development, which includes 10 single-family detached homes and 12 townhomes. And what we're going to do is I'm going to have Mr. Henry read the notice like we always do. After the notice is read, we'll have the applicant come to the podium and summarize. Just touch on a few points. I know a lot of you people have been following this very closely, so you're very familiar. And then what we'll do is we'll open the public hearing. For the public hearing, we'll start because there's quite a few people and some out there. And if that overflows, we have some people that'll be upstairs. So we'll start in this room. So anybody who wants to be heard, we'll start here. Then we'll move to the, out there to the other room and then upstairs. And then we'll go virtual. So make sure everybody gets a chance to talk. After we get through all that, if somebody else has another comment, we'll welcome that. And we'll handle it that way. Reminder that we try to limit conversation or comments to five minutes. And that seems to be more than enough time, but there's a light on there, a warning light when you're approaching it and a red light when you hit your five minutes. So I appreciate we kind of moved along because we got a lot of people here. So with that said, and I appreciate everybody coming tonight. Mr. Henry, would you please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Niskiuna, New York, and the applicable provisions of the town law of the state of New York, a public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna in the Town Board Meeting Room at 1 Niskiuna Circle on the 27th day of March, 2023 at 7:00 PM to consider an application from Matthew Mulberg, agent for Michael Rutherford, for a special use permit application for a 22-lot average-density development subdivision, 10 single-family homes and 12 townhomes at 1851 Union Street and 1245 Roughner Road in the Town of Niskiuna. The properties are located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. A copy of the average-density development special use permit and subdivision sketch plan application will be available for inspection at the Planning Department in the Niskiuna Town Hall and can be viewed at the town's website under the News and Announcement tab and will be shown electronically during the public hearing. If you wish to express an opinion regarding the public hearing, you may do so at the above-mentioned time and place. If you cannot be present, you may request a virtual login to the meeting by emailing lrobertson@niskiuna.org or calling the town phone number. Or you may be, you may set forth your opinion in a letter which will be made part of the permanent record. Please note that there is a five-minute time limit for each speaker at the public hearing. And submitted letters will not be read out loud at the public hearing, but such letters will be included in the minutes and added to the record. The Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna will hear all persons interested during the aforementioned public hearing. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Niskiuna, New York, Kevin A. Walsh, Chairman, Planning Board and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. So with that, the applicant would like to step up and just give a quick overview. Appreciate that. I say, I think the public is pretty familiar, but just touch on the key points.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Kimber from ABD Engineers. I'm half the Mohawk Golf Club. And tonight, we're presenting for a public hearing for an average-density development, which includes 10 single-family homes and 12 townhomes on about 14 acres of vacant land on the Mohawk Golf Club. It's adjacent to Roughner Road. We are planning on coming in with a new town road off an existing paper street off Roughner Road.
Good connection. Okay, how do I sound?
Better.
Okay.
So this is a 22-lot average-density development with a new cul-de-sac road off of Roughner Road off an existing paper street. The 22 lots consist of 10 single-family and 12 shared townhomes. And being that it's an average-density development, the lot sizes are smaller than regular single-family homes. Some of them are anyway. And it includes about three acres of conservation area, including a 50-foot buffer from the rear yards of the homes on Roughner Road and about a 200, 200 to 300-foot or so section of woods that will be undisturbed. There will also be a stormwater management area on the western part of the parcel, which will be incorporated into a water feature that will be maintained by the golf course. Utilities will connect out onto Roughner Road through an emergency access route, which actually utilizes an existing 20-foot easement that touches our parcel. That's where water will be connected. Sewer, we're planning on connecting out through where the road is to the line that runs south of Roughner Road. I think that's about all there is to it. You know, obviously, I'm here to answer any further questions. This, the plan hasn't changed since we presented it to the board last. I guess I'll give it back to you guys.
Okay, thank you. And yes, the plan hasn't changed. And there's more engineering to be done. Basically, we're at the point in the process where a public hearing and then next up would be a discussion, which is on the agenda for later tonight. So we'll be talking about the project later tonight.
Okay? Thank you.
All right. All right, so with that said, we're going to open the public hearing, the public hearing for the Mohawk Golf Club for this average-density development. So we'll start with anybody in the room here that would like to speak. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we'll listen to what you have to say. So the public hearing is open.
Thank you. My name is George Young. I live at 1241 Roughner Road. I wanted to make a few points. Both myself and my family strongly oppose this development. And then two detailed points on this plan. The current plan is to use a paper road near 1219 Roughner Road and also to put a third road behind that house. And I feel like a home that was purchased and improved, which is currently in the middle of a quiet street, to surround that by three roads is really out of character for the neighborhood and the town. And it really places undue burden on that home. So I'd like the board to really consider the impact on that house. Secondly, I wanted to note that the plan currently proposes to use my driveway as emergency access. And I have a written letter into the Town Planning Board and publicly, I'd like to notify you that I claim this property and the town cannot grant use of this land to NGC Golf Operations or any other entity. And my claim to this land, I believe, meets the five requirements outlined in the adverse possession laws of New York State. And those are that the claim is adverse and hostile. The claim is actual. I exercise direct control over this property. It's exclusive. I've used this property for over 10 years, open and notorious. And again, I've exercised these factors in excess of the statutory period of 10 years. I also wanted to note to the board that there is significant case law that would support this claim. The details are in the letter, but the relevant New York State case law includes Waterview Towers, Angkor versus 2610 Cropsey Development Corp., Goss versus Trombley, and Best versus Haircutters Limited. But in all these cases, a disputed parcel of land used for access, the New York State Courts have decided in favor of the homeowner. So because of that, I'm requesting the Town Planning Board reject the special use permit requested by NGC Golf Operations. And please contact me at the address that I provided if you have any other additional information or questions on my claim. I'd lastly note that I've initiated a quiet title action in regards to this matter and hope that I can resolve this soon.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Young. And we did all receive copies of that and so did the town employees, so thank you.
Great.
Next up.
Good evening. My name is Josh Spain. My three boys and I live at 1219 Roughner Road. Along with my comments tonight, I've submitted a letter to Laura Clark, and I know that they've been forwarded to the board. So rather than reading the full letter, I'm just going to do my best to summarize and hit some of the key points. For starters, as I emphasized when I addressed the Planning Board in late February, I oppose the development of 13 acres. I oppose any main access roadway and any emergency roadway along Roughner Road. I spoke at length in my address to the board in February about my concerns that this development will do irreparable harm to the character of our Roughner Road neighborhood as well as that of the surrounding neighborhoods. Today, my opinion and stance on this has only grown stronger. You've heard from so many, including me, that this development will harm a thriving ecosystem which serves as the habitat for an extensive amount of wildlife, plant life, and trees. That ecosystem, that wildlife, that habitat, they all contribute to the rich history and character of our neighborhoods. Removing the demolition of a home, changing the location of the main access roadway does not change that. I see the Mohawk Club and their engineering firm has submitted a long-form environmental assessment. I also understand there are many technical elements of the project, including all the infrastructure requirements that have yet to be worked out. Engaging a town-designated engineer for this process is critical, and I know a TDE has been selected, so that's great. It's just critical that this TDE be given, you know, the appropriate amount of time, no matter what the expense, and that TDE's work has to be thoroughly scrutinized. Where they may not have the expertise or the authority to assess certain elements of the project and the environmental assessment, the appropriate agencies and authorities really should be engaged in all this, whether it's Army Corps of Engineers for wetlands, DOT for roads and traffic, New York State DEC for assessing true impact on habitat and wildlife that have been highlighted by so many. Furthermore, if any deficiencies are found with any of the infrastructure required to support this, that cost should be covered solely by the developer. None of those costs should be passed on to us, the taxpayers. The latest plan being presented by Mohawk Club lacks important details that would provide all of us the necessary information, some necessary information on the newly proposed main access roadway. So I do have to ask, and if you look at the sketch, why aren't homes depicted on the parcels near the new road? Why aren't the driveways depicted on the parcels near the new road? Why isn't there the width of the new road designated there? The distance between the parcels? You know, there's a lot of details that were provided in the original plan that aren't provided where this new road is going to sit. You know, I can only guess that it's either because this proposal is now being rushed or because that information is only going to cause more concern and negative comments from my neighbors and I. And frankly, it only reinforces the lack of trust that we have in the Mohawk Golf Club. It's critical that this Planning Board hold the Mohawk Club to a very high standard throughout this process, and it already feels like shortcuts are being taken on their part. The last point I'd like to make here is very personal for my boys and I. This paper street borders on our property to the south, space that my neighbor Marty Laux and I had maintained as if our own for greater than 20 years. Marty, for much longer than that. Most, if not all, residents of our neighborhood had no idea that a paper street even existed there. It doesn't mean that I have a right to own it and take it over, but it does speak to the character and the nature of the neighborhood. It's a tribute to the great care we've taken with that property, how it blends in with and is part of the natural, normal landscape of our own properties and of the entire neighborhood. Take a quick look at the sketch for this proposal. And I think you've already heard it. One glaring element is that our residence would not just be a corner lot with a street in the front and the side, but it essentially becomes a peninsula with roadways on three of the four sides. Is that even legal? Is there precedent for this in the town? We've heard a lot about precedent about tearing a house down, but what about surrounding an existing house with three roads? It'll most certainly negatively impact my property value. It'll clearly, you know, it would clearly undue burden my property and my home, which goes against specific language that's in the comprehensive plan for the town. So thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to have my voice and the voices of the neighbors heard tonight to help inform you on these important decisions that are still to come. With that, I urge the Planning Board to not recommend the approval of the requested special use permit to the Niskiuna Town Board. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Torres Salian, 2342 Algonquin Road. I live in Cuyuga Hills, so I am not Roughner Road, but I, and because of that, I have the luxury of some distance. I can sort of view what's going on here, and I could, I've been taking in the comments. And, you know, I'm really struck by the stories of my Roughner Road neighbors. And a lot of them have shared what purchasing their home had meant to them, why they were drawn, excuse me, to Niskiuna. We all have our stories of how we found our homes. I fled Half Moon in 2013. Rampant development, no trees, tons of vinyl houses, insane traffic, overcrowded schools, 10,000-plus kids there right now. Two things I keep thinking about, keep going back to for these homeowners on Roughner. When they purchase their home, whenever you purchase a home, if there's a large tractable land behind you, one always needs to think about what could potentially happen here, right? There is no way that any of the people on Roughner could have had any reasonable expectation of what this proposal entails. So what is a reasonable expectation for these homeowners? Certainly not this. Certainly not that there's going to be two gashes put through this historic, pristine neighborhood. No, that's beyond the scope of what is a reasonable expectation for that property. Not that it wouldn't be developed, but that in this way. Okay, so it's just not reasonable to expect that when purchasing. And if you rubber-stamp this, what do you do next? What happens to other homeowners when they come in Niskiuna? Should they be worried that a tractable land behind them, they could just like carve a road through? It's just not fair. I also think about when everybody probably don't read our deeds that much, but if you read the deed to your property, every deed has a language upon transfer of ownership rights. The right to quiet enjoyment of your property, that's in your deed. That's a covenant. This is, will not be quiet nor will it be enjoyable. I don't fault or I'm not taking issue with the actions of developers because I think a lot of developers are, you know, kind of you could take one and replace it with another and you'd have the same kind of result, right? They want fast. They want the lease money. They want as much housing as they can squeeze into the tiniest lot, regardless of infrastructure or other. They get to walk away, they're houses, okay? We're talking about homes, and they're into houses. And they're going to walk away, and we're going to be left with what remains. I also want to ask you, the Planning Board, what, when I moved to Niskiuna, I thought, I told people, you know, everybody I knew went to Clifton Park. I went the other way. People thought I was nuts. Why would you leave Saratoga County and come to Niskiuna where, you know, you pay like 40, 50% higher taxes? I know so many people that have moved. I keep saying, come to Niski, come to Niski. And they're like, no way, man, the taxes are outrageous. I'll never go there. Off they go up the northway. And I was involved when I lived there in a group called Future Half Moon that I worked to talk about rampant development. A lot of good that did. Just drive down 146 and pretty soon it's going to be, you know, it's like Rockland County or Long Island. My question to the Planning Board, because this, this whole thing is making me think, because I do have some experience with planning, what is your obligation? Why, if we think Niski is progressive, what is this Planning Board showing us to prove anything to do with anything progressive as far as planning? For example, impact fees. A lot of municipalities have them. Why do they have them? Because there's negative impact on not just the infrastructure, the schools, the town services, fire, ambulance. Don't, I know that you're smarter than accepting that more development equals a bigger tax base because we know that's a lie. It's a negative impact. A lot of municipalities will charge a developer a certain amount per unit and put it into a fund. Has that, is that something that you would consider? I think you should consider a moratorium while you sit back and think about, what are we doing here, Planning Board? What kind of progressive planning can we, can we do? What kind of housing options might people really want? I worry for my children that if I did stay in Niskiuna, that they wouldn't be able to ever come back here because many people today, young people, they can't afford to buy, you know, first home, first-time home buyers are really feeling the squeeze. So I'm just going to end with, because my time's running out, about some of the progressive planning tools that I believe that you should be looking at. I think you should start with a moratorium, put a pause on things, think about impact fees, put it into some kind of like an account. Maybe that can be used for, even Saratoga County has Saratoga Plan where I would look at like, what are the five, 10, 15-plus acre parcels left in this town?
Need a summary, please.
I'm wrapping up. Today's Wall Street Journal article on New York is poised to ban natural gas in buildings. Senator Brian Kavanaugh says the premise is if you continue to build buildings that are going to require fossil fuels for decades to come, you're baking in destructive behavior that burning fossil fuels causes. And that's just my point of let's be a little bit progressive here and think about some planning tools, think about the climate, think about the residents here. And to my Roughner Road neighbors, I'm with you.
Thank you, we need to move along. We appreciate your comments.
Power to the people.
Hi, I'm Mark Thomas at 1265 Roughner Road. And mostly, I just want to get up here and reassert my and my wife's strong opposition for the development of the 14 acres behind Roughner Road. The nice lady from Algonquin, I'm sorry, I didn't get your, get your name. Teres, thanks. Kind of said what I had prepared here. You know, let's double the density of half of this space behind us, twice as many people per square foot, less privacy. What would be the town's rationale for changing the rules so that this neighborhood will become more dense, more crowded, lower in our quality of life? Talk about a lousy precedent. A lot was said about the precedent of knocking down a house. But hey, if we do this, let's punch a hole in every nice street in Niskiuna, the wooded area behind it, cut down the trees, drive out the wildlife, and put in duplexes. Is that what Niskiuna wants to be going forward? We all know that it's widely recognized Niskiuna is a sought-after zip code because we're different than Clifton Park. Nice, low-density, single-family, private residence where families thrive. And nobody will convince us that property values will increase as a result of trying to squeeze as much real estate on as little surface area possibly using duplex units. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Maddie McCarthy, 1237 Roughner Road. I've lived in Niskiuna all my life. My family moved to Roughner Road when I was going into kindergarten. And to be honest, I think I had an incredible childhood. I was able to travel to my friends' houses, able to run, walk, bike, longboard, anything without worry of major traffic. And I was able to observe such a diverse range of wildlife, which I'm able to do today, thankfully. But unfortunately, that might not be the case after this whole development. And, you know, I was really, really proud of this town growing up. But unfortunately, as time has gone on, I've become very disappointed in the priorities. Before, it was protecting our town, listening to our neighbors and our community and protecting our green space. And now all I see are cookie-cutter condos, cookie-cutter homes, and things that just stand out from the historic neighborhoods around us. Along with that, I want to discuss the deforestation, which would come along with this project. And I'm not sure what everyone knows about deforestation, but it's estimated to be 25% of the total greenhouse gas production, and that's really an issue. And some of the impacts of deforestation are loss of habitat, increased greenhouse gases, water in the atmosphere, soil erosion and flooding, and so much more. And since I do have such a limited amount of time, I do encourage everyone to continue to educate yourselves and read about this issue as well as listening to your current homeowners, taxpayers, and future homeowners. From the day this project was announced, you've heard from so many people speaking in opposition of the Mohawk Club development. People who've come with their own thoughts, feelings, and opinions. So far, at least, please correct me if I'm wrong, the only people who have come and spoken in favor of this development are those who were asked to by the club. And I think that should say a lot about what this development means to people. This is something that was not asked for. There's not a high demand for it. The demand lies in protecting our town for our current and future generations. So I'll conclude with this. A few meetings ago, one of you mentioned a project that was approved, and you regretted it. So I ask you, if you vote in favor of this project, will you regret it? Will you be able to go to sleep at night and know with 100% confidence that you made the right decision to approve this project? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jackson Regan, 1357 Roughner Road. I'm a Niskiuna resident, attending Santa College. And I don't think it's a surprise statement to say that I think this is a lousy idea and a horribly thought-out plan. Let's start with the environmental impacts. I've lived on Roughner Road since I was in kindergarten. And having walked, biked, and recent years driven past the golf club countless times, I can say that the woodlands around this golf club are full of wildlife. I know that when researching this issue, one representative for the club, who conveniently is not here to support his plan, said that there was no wildlife. And I think that it's just simply not true. The club is turning a blind eye, or they're just not being thorough, which, given what I've heard today, seems to be a trend. So when you take the environmental impact, that's one bad issue. But let's talk about the money because that's something that the club is quick to point out as to why it should support this plan. Money. This redevelopment, development project, they say it's good for tax revenue. And what town in light of COVID isn't trying to boost the revenue? But is destroying a neighborhood's charm and property value really worth theoretically the possibility of more tax revenue? And yes, for all of the homeowners, my parents included, our property value is going to go down. If you've ever driven through our neighborhood, you'll notice one thing about it. It's peaceful. There's very little through traffic. And if you go through, you'll oftentimes find residents walking or biking. It could be a family, it could be a couple, it could be old, young. It's something we love and we're proud about with our neighborhood. It's peaceful and it's quiet. And that's something that I think is true for a lot of Niskiuna, seeing as how there are many different trails that connect Rosendale and Yercoy, to River Road. Latney Park is connected to the Erie Canal towpath. Think about what happens if that plan gets approved. Through traffic, in addition to all those residents being squeezed into that tiny area, in addition to the noise, let's be more practical. It's a safety issue. I know that in my neighborhood, there are so many people who walk and bike, and they might not want to. They might have a lower quality of local life because they want to stay safe because there'll be more cars going through the neighborhood. And it'll be especially true for all of us who live right next to the club. I love biking, but if there's more cars for all those homes than anyone who's just cutting through, I don't know if I want to do it. And I want to finish up by saying that I know that there- And I want to finish up by saying that I know that there, the planning board and any other local politicians who are part of the town who are here tonight, and you're all here because you were elected to serve Niskuna, its residents. You're proud of your posts. And this town prides itself on its quiet charm, its natural beauty, its connection to the natural scenery throughout this area of New York. So I'm going to ask you guys, how can you profess to serve the best interests of this town if you're approving a plan that destroys everything that makes Niskuna what it is? If you have any pride in the natural charm and beauty of this town, you'll recognize that this is just a short-sighted cash grab. And if you care about the residents, as soon as it comes up to a vote, you're going to vote no. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Bob Serrata. We live at 1262 Hawthorne Road, one street over really from where this project may impact a lot of the residents. 22 homes, 22 families, one or two cars per household. You probably have a much better idea how that will impact the infrastructure in the community. But I'm here really to talk about my friends that you'll displace in this project. The animals that live there on the 15 acres. The deer come through my backyard, I'm one street over, they come through my backyard. Last year, I had seven deer and two fox in my backyard at the same time. You know, that's, that's all part of the quality of life of living in this neighborhood beyond Roughness Road, which will be impacted the most. Two, three weeks ago, on Roughness Road, there was a bald eagle sitting in the tree for three or four hours. I've heard from other people in the neighborhood, people that live in our community, that they've seen bald eagles over in the golf course several times. This, you know, what, what, what will impact the infrastructure, that's one thing. But this is wider than that. The outreach of these, these animals that come over, and they affect the quality of life throughout the whole area, not just Roughness Road. So with that, you know, I don't think it's a good idea. Don't displace my friends.
Thank you.
Hi, Deb Friedson, 2508 Wamer Lane. As I told you at our last meeting, I'm a retired teacher in Niskuna. I have so much pride for my town. I want to take a minute to say, yay you. Where's that other young people? Wow.
Yeah, please address the board though, okay?
I apologize, I was just looking for them. I'm so proud of these kids for you and us to be able to show them how local government works, your patience, your kindness, your, this has been tough. And I want to tell you how much I respect this process. I, you know that I'm very against this. I feel that it's a great opportunity to show our kids. And, and I raise kindergarteners in this area. Now I'm one of the older ones. It's not easy to start facing 70 and realize that I'm one of the older ones. These are the kids that I taught and I'm so proud. So at this age, I can't ride my bike. I can't do the things I used to do, but I do enjoy the peace and quiet in walking my dog along beautiful historic Roughness Road. I am on Wamer Lane, so you could say this isn't my fight, but I'm here to support my neighbors because when I fought the end of the street that was broken through, when Wamer Lane cut through to Roughness Road, there were people who stood for me. So I'm here for them. And I'm here for our whole community because I live in an old fashioned community where my son lives around the corner. And we just love the environment that we have in our town. Please preserve it. Please hear what we are saying. This is why I moved here over 30 years ago. And I plan on staying for as many years as my hope will hold. There's a place for us here, there's a place for them there, there's a place for the eagles, there's a place for all of us. This is not a good idea. This is destroying, again, a neighborhood to put up this. For what? For what? To lose all the faith that we have in you? We're counting on you, please come through. Thank you so much for hearing my voice.
Thank you.
Carol Furman, I live at 1269 Roughness Road. And I am opposed to the plan to develop 22 homes behind Roughness Road with the only access through a cul-de-sac off Roughness Road. I don't consider this a small development. There are only 20 homes on Roughness Road between Linwood and Mountain View Road. This development equals and exceeds this number of homes. So it's, it's a full block of homes. I don't think this number of homes is appropriate for a cul-de-sac. The golf course has been there for a long time and many neighborhoods have developed around it. But it acts as a barrier to free traffic flow and has resulted in concentration of traffic on Roughness Road already. This proposed plan would further concentrate traffic on Roughness Road rather than creating a through street and allowing traffic to flow more naturally. This further degrades the character of the quiet residential neighborhood that others have been describing. It also establishes a variation on normal construction of homes where backyards face other backyards and are not exposed to a road on three sides. The plan for emergency access to Roughness Road does not allow for future development toward Row Road, where normal north-south traffic flow would occur on a block that was parallel and backed onto Roughness Road. Other variations of the proposed development created an access road for emergencies toward Row Road, and it allowed space between the homes so that if in the future further development was proposed, a road would even be possible to connect Row Road through this development and into South Country Club. The proposed development is on land that slopes down behind Roughness and north toward Row. Low land in these areas is wet and muddy through much of the year. Removal of trees and increased non-porous surfaces will likely increase the runoff and result in even wetter backyards. In addition, I'm concerned about the impact of adding 22 homes to current water and sewer lines on Roughness Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Board members, Town Attorney, fellow Niskuna residents, my name is Judd Staley. I live at 1367 Roughness Court. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of myself and my wife, Mary Staley, and let you know that we are steadfastly and unalterably opposed to the development as it has been proposed. I'm not going to reiterate the very sound arguments that have been made by my neighbors tonight, but I would like to just mention what's most important to our family. And that's the character of the neighborhood. 34 years ago, when we first moved into the neighborhood, we did so because it provided a beautiful variety of architecture, a diversity in the ages of the residents, both older families and new families with young children, the walkability and peacefulness of the neighborhood, and the low density and the larger and very attractive lots. To approve this proposal for average density will change the character of the neighborhood, which would fly in the face of the town's comprehensive plan and probably the new comprehensive plan, which is being worked on right now. I and my family would encourage the board to reject this application for average density development adjacent to Roughness Road. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. John Baronowski, 1101 Hedgewood Lane. For the many reasons that I've heard from the community over the past few meetings, I support their comments in opposition to this application. I'm not going to touch on any of those. I would like to touch on, on one general comment, which does follow up on the gentleman who just spoke. I want to address another aspect that makes this application wholly unsuitable. And in doing so, I want to quote two brief passages from the town code. Passages that place a significant burden on this board in making a determination about the suitability of an application under the average density development or ADD provision of the town code. I know that all of you are familiar with what I'm going to read, but I'd like to get it into the record anyway. And I'm sure many of the, of my neighbors and townspeople here have become familiar with portions of the town code in increasing their education about this application. So these two brief excerpts are from chapter 220 of town code on what I'll just call ADD, average density development. The first is from 220-28 subsection H1. Such development shall, I'm using that word shall, I'm not using it, it's there, shall not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of the persons residing in the vicinity or injurious, injurious to property or improvements within its proximity. That word shall is pretty definitive. I don't believe at all that this application is in accordance with this language in your code, in our code. Next, chapter 220-28A. The purpose of this section on ADD is to permit variation in lot size and housing type in suitable areas, et cetera, et cetera. I'm going to skip across to the concluding part of this sentence, which says to facilitate, facilitate the adequate and economical provisions of streets, economical provision of streets, and to preserve the natural and scenic qualities of open space. Again, I know you know this. I am certainly struck in reading the code by the contradiction between this application and the language of the code here. The proposal that's before you undertakes destruction of open space for the purpose of preserving the natural and scenic qualities of open space. The provision of open space in the applicant's plan makes a mockery of the language of ADD. To make that worse, the size of the destroyed open space is greater by far than the open space that is to be provided by the plan, which can be described at best as marginal open space. Is that what is intended by ADD? So on its face, this application should be determined to be unsuitable, an unsuitable candidate for ADD based on the exact language of chapter 220. Again, preserving the natural and scenic qualities of open space because the application is the opposite of open space. And I go as far as saying that this application has held the attention of the board and the community far past what would be appropriate and should have, in an interpretation of town code that is really clear on its face, should have been rejected at the initial concept stage. I believe, and this might sound severe, I believe that a proper course of action at this stage is a definitive and one in spirit and letter of the law. And I urge you to dismiss this application now. To continue, to continue it is to undermine the authority and judgment of the board and to sidestep the very language of town law. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jim Dillon. I live at 1242 Roughness Road. And I'm going to take a different angle at talking about this. And I want to build a little bit about what Josh said about difficulty we would have trusting the country club and its motives. Whenever any party puts forth a proposal, okay, that's their right to do so. But when that proposal starts to have an impact on another party, you would hope that the person putting that proposal forth would consider the impact that would have on the other party involved. And I do not feel that it's been the case with this proposal. I don't have to bring you back to some of the early presentations at the board, at the country club made. And what struck me was whenever one of you mentioned that they need to consider some other part of their property, the response that they gave you was, no, that's not even on the table. It was like it was sacrosanct that not one extra inch of the golf course could be considered. Why? Because it was historic. Well, when you ask why it was historic, it was, it was 100 years old. It was not a Civil War burial ground. It was not a Civil War battleground. It was a golf course, it's been there 100 years. And their original plan was not to touch one inch of that golf course. What they were going to do is, they bought a house under questionable circumstances, were ready to knock it down, put in a road where there was no paper road. Why? So then that one inch of that golf course would be touched. And that has been their driving reason behind this whole thing. Why? So that a few hundred people can play golf six months a year, okay? To achieve that, it would have an impact on people who live there 24/7, year in and year out. So I have a lot of trouble trusting any organization that would do those types of things, that they had no consideration for the people that they were impacting. And they put the needs of a piece of property and golfers above people who have lived in their home for years. And I really felt for you because I felt you were really trying to find a way where the needs could be balanced. And you were basically told, we can't even discuss the golf course. And if you look at this second option, not much is being touched on the golf course. So I think that tells you a little bit of something about the motives behind this. It's not caring about the people that they're putting this burden on so that their golf course is not touched. It's not all the technical stuff, but I do think it's something that needs to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Carol Holmes, 1301 Roughness. I've been up here before, so I know I'm a familiar face to you. I wasn't going to speak tonight. It was my goal to sit and keep my mouth shut for once, but here I am. I'm not going to reiterate what you've all heard. You all know where we stand and all the reasons that us on Roughness feel that way. But after listening to these two well-spoken young people that spoke tonight, it made me think that maybe that's who we should be listening to. Not your experts, but your future. This is your future of Niskuna, and they're telling you that this is wrong. These are the people that will be voting for you, that will be keeping our, our community as it is and what we stand for. Please, if you don't want to listen to us seniors who are probably on the way up, please listen to the young people who are your future and who are what we want Niskuna to stand for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Schwartz, I'm speaking for myself and my wife Cindy, 1363 Ruffner Court. Fortunately, we are on a court which protects us from some of this, and you've seen me up here many times because I'm very much opposed to this for everything that was going on here before. But I think there's a couple of things that have caught my attention recently besides many of the issues that have been brought up. I was walking my dog, which I do all the time, and everybody sees me with my hood on. You walk up Linwood and you hit the 14T, and what strikes me is that our good neighbors on the other side of the fence that says "no trespassing," and then you look at this map, and if I remember what I read in there, the walkway that goes over the country club is going to have a fence along the side, and the road is going to have a fence along the side, which means, don't come near us. We want to destroy your neighborhood, and we want to do whatever we want in here, but you guys can't come near us because we don't want you here, because we don't care about you. We only care about what we want for our members, and most of them don't live in the town. They don't pay taxes, and they really don't care about the quality. That's all. Thank you.
My name is Christopher Morris. I live at 1917 Mayfair Road. Chairman Walsh, Planning Board members, I've submitted this letter through email, but I wanted to reiterate it and apologies for reading it so I don't stumble all over my topics. I wish to express my opposition to the application for development of the Mohawk Golf Club property adjacent to Ruffner Road. My wife and I purchased a home in the country club neighborhood in Niskuna in late 2021. We were very much drawn to the neighborhood's character of older homes, walkability, proximity to Union Street, and overall family friendliness. While the preferred scheme presented as part of this application doesn't exit directly into our neighborhood, I share the concerns voiced by many of the residents of Rosendale Estates. I'd specifically like to mention a couple of them and touch on maybe some other components that others have not yet. Specific to the town's comprehensive plan and neighborhood character, the Rosendale Estates neighborhood is one of the most established and desirable in the town. As noted in the first paragraphs of the comprehensive plan, preservation of community character has wide support from the residents. The plan goes on to state that new development should not compromise the integrity of the surrounding neighborhoods. The plan also addresses exterior maintenance, renovation, additions, you know, add-ons to your normal homes and such, saying that those actions should be harmonious with the surrounding streetscape and maintain the neighborhood's cohesive character. They should also ensure the viability of Niskuna's traditional neighborhoods is maintained. I'd argue that it's reasonable that any new development adjacent to an existing neighborhood receive the same or more scrutiny as renovation or addition. It's my feeling that the proposed golf club development would not maintain the neighborhood's cohesive character, nor would it ensure the viability of the Rosendale Estates neighborhood. I'd also like to mention the loss of forested land. Land development is a primary driver of deforestation. At the time the comprehensive plan was created, residential land use in the town comprised 86% of the town, while parks and forested land was only 6% of the land area. I'm sure that's been reduced since 2003, when the comprehensive plan was created. With limited space left, with limited open space left within its boundary, the town must carefully consider the impacts of any and all development projects, which can include loss of habitat for resident migratory wildlife, most notably birds, loss of natural heat regulating landscapes such as forests, and increased community heat islands, loss of natural water, excuse me, water management resources, especially when faced with ever-increasing significant precipitation events. To put in perspective, this approximate 14-acre site is mostly successional forest. Loss of this 14 acres would be equivalent to the loss of 10% of the Reese Nature Sanctuary, or 14% of the Lyshak Hill Preserve, or 16% of the Mohawk River State Park. While the tree stock may not hold significant older hardwoods, there are certainly oaks, hickories, and other species that could mature into specimen trees. This won't occur if the site's cleared for development. I also have concerns with site drainage and downstream impacts, particularly water runoff from the additional impervious surfaces and the downstream infrastructure that will retain and then transport all of this, which is likely old and inadequate, excuse me. As I mentioned earlier, the Mohawk Golf Club is our neighbor. I sincerely appreciate the efforts of Mr. Rutherford to keep the club solvent and maintain it as a valuable recreation and open space asset that it is. Should the planning board discuss this later, I wanted to mention a couple of things that I would respectfully suggest. To ensure that the site design includes the maximum buffer distance and in turn, as many trees as possible, as possible between the existing homes on Ruffner and the new properties. To ensure the tree council is engaged to identify any trees that could be included in the site plan and then have those left standing. To preserve to the greatest extent possible a tree line to maintain the existing aesthetic between the south and west sides of the existing course and the new homes. To consider potential conservation easements on the other areas of the Mohawk Golf Club to prevent future subdevelopment. And to seriously evaluate as part of the Town Code, Section 18921, requirements for parkland set aside, including any opportunities for passive recreation, open space, bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, and then also decline the fee in lieu of option and/or waiver. I appreciate the opportunity to submit these comments to the board, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan Valencourt, 1274 Ruffner Road. I'm here to speak in opposition of the proposed development of land at 1851 Union Street. While I respect a property owner's legal right to develop their lands, I prefer this development not proceed. I agree with the majority of the comments that have already been outlined before. Some of the items I'd like to also reiterate for the board to bring to attention. There's still the outstanding request for an impact assessment to the schools, which has not been addressed. I believe that was brought up by both the planning board as well as several community members. Before a resolution sends this to the town board, I request that this be reconciled so the community and town board are able to assess the potential infrastructure and tax burden that the additional homes may cause, especially relating to the school districts, you know, new development plans that they're performing, specifically done around prior, you know, assessments for new families, new dwellings, knowing that this was not on the radar for development and consideration of the number of students they'd be considering. Secondly, infrastructure on the Ruffner Road neighborhood is in question, especially the ability to support 22 additional homes. Many people have brought up the water and sewer issue, which will be identified by TDE. It'd be important to have the TDE ensure that they're assessing electrical demands as well. Our neighborhood frequently loses power, sometimes several times a month, and that's not always coinciding with a storm. Frequently, we have transformers that blow because either they're overloaded or there's a mismatch in the grid. We are plagued with several issues that National Grid is constantly addressing. In fact, several residents have generators solely because of how inconsistent the reliability of our power grid is. And I understand that this is an item we, as residents, need to continue to bring up to National Grid, but I want to make sure that the board is aware of it as well. You know, in fact, when we were checking with National Grid, based on this last outage that we had had for several hours, they had noted that they have a flaw in their system and that their system does not actually track online issues identified by residents, and they are only actively tracking phone calls for complaints and issues with the grid. The person on the phone identified that as a current limitation of their capability of the system. So I would, I want to highlight this because it would be important for a TDE maybe to perform additional assessments and dig deeper than just any basic data they may be able to gather from National Grid, because the data set may be flawed once it's provided by National Grid or any additional assessments. And so I think that is an important perspective to keep into consideration when considering adding an additional 22 modern homes with likely high electricity demand. Also, you know, as noted with the ecological, you know, impacts of this, there is, as many of the residents very near the golf course can probably attest to, an extensive coyote pack that lives within the bounds of the golf course. I noted in their documentation, the golf course noted that there's no active hunting, trapping, or any other means of environmental conservation being performed. I'm not sure if there should be or shouldn't be, but it is notable that, you know, there's an extensive coyote pack living there, and by deforesting 14 acres, that could pose a significant impact to the residents of the surrounding area, seeing as how that pack would be displaced, and it would then drive it into the surrounding neighborhood. And then finally, in the packet, construction hours were noted from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, seven days a week, including holidays. I would ask that the board consider prohibiting construction on weekends and holidays. Due to the tight residential layout, construction noise would be an undue burden upon community members, especially for the two years that the project is estimated to be in execution. I also would request such prohibition due to large number of young children on the roadway and significant disruption this schedule would cause to the surrounding community.
Louisa Lombardo, 1242 Ruffner Road. I've spoken here many times. I've submitted letters. I've also submitted photographs of various things, so you know my talk. This last storm, we had two power outages, 12 hours each day. And when I think of those grinding pumps without energy or electricity to get rid of that stuff, that could be a problem. Also, with all the snow and all the sump pumps now going constantly, and if you go for a walk, I don't know if it's legal or not, but they're pumping their water outside. So there's a need for electricity. We're pumping, I'm on Ruffner Road, I'm at the top of the hill, and we have water, and we're pumping it out. So again, jumping on that, the electrical outages and the need for whatever the grinding pump is, and National Grid is on my speed dial because it happens all the time. In going through the talk that you gave at the last meeting, going through the comprehensive plan and your comments that you like to have two connecting roads in and out of places, I feel that, you know, this demolition of 1245 is still not out of the woods. You know, if you can't find two ways in and out of that development, and again, the more I look at that picture, that is so unnatural, that is not a natural thing, and that little bend in the road, is that a calming device, or is that to avoid the 11th hole, you know? It's just not a natural way of looking at it. When you talk about noise for the construction, the minute it's golfing season, the crack of dawn, and again, I don't live back-to-back with the golf course, I'm across the street. I hear the leaf blowers, the lawn maintenance, you know, and you remove more of that tree buffer and all those sounds. We hear the fireworks on the Fourth of July, that's fun to hear. We hear the bands when there's a party going on. That noise does travel. It does travel. So there will be more noise. And again, if they wanted to preserve the historic character of the golf course, why would they put a subdivision there? And if you look, you know, those retention ponds, so is that to provide, you know, a buffer so that the golfers don't have to look at the backyards of all these houses? You've heard me talk on and on about the character. Everybody loves our character. The last statement at the last meeting was, "The board hopes that whatever does get developed there can contribute to the neighborhood and not be a standalone entity." You know? I don't see this contributing to our neighborhood in any way. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Abrams. I live at 2512 Hilltop Road. So I am here as a resident from that section that borders the golf course. I agree with all of the points that have been made this evening. I totally oppose the development and access roads that are proposed. I believe that it will negatively impact the character of Ruffner Road, but as well as my neighborhood on Hilltop Road and all of the streets and neighbors behind me. One major concern that I have living in that section is of noise pollution. When my husband and I first moved to our home, we thought that we were going to be in a quieter residence area than our previous home at 1360 Valencia Road. We were, we've been residents for over 30 years of Niskuna. We did not take into the account the blatant disregard of the production of noise that the golf club has done. They will start their blowers and their leaf blowers more than one at a time, two or three at a time, along with the mower at 6:00 AM sharp, every single day of the week. It doesn't matter that we're living residents backing up to this noise. I have complained to them, I have complained to the town, I've had the town noise inspector go out there and he's, and that has been, oh, it's of normal decibel levels. Well, not when there's two or three mowers going at one time and blowers as well. My concern is that since I live next to a waterway, the pond that is behind my house and on the golf course, the water acts as an amplifier of noise. They're proposing a water section on this as well. That amplifies noise naturally. Including more residents to this area includes, including more noise, includes more pollution, and includes noise that begins so early in the morning as cars leave to go to school, work, et cetera. Everyone will be subjected to this noise pollution. The golf club has never changed their ways. You can complain to them over and over again, they are not good neighbors. They are only in their own self-interest, and they're golfers, who are very few people compared to us as residents, as taxpayers. Could a development of this type be put on another area of the golf course is one of my concerns. There are many paper roads in which such areas could be accessed. Would it happen? Could it happen? Are you setting a precedence if you agree to this? Are other areas also endangered of being used and abused and developed? They've already clear-cut about an acre of land that I could see out my kitchen window. Right now, it's a mud puddle. We've had so much water from snow and runoff, and it's on a hill. It's running directly into that waterway, that pond area that is behind my house. Is that land already polluting that waterway? How is our wildlife on the golf course going to survive with polluted water? Has the impact of runoff been considered? Has the DEC even looked at this? I have so many questions, but I am totally opposed to any of this type of development on such a natural, beautiful property. And I've been very upset that all those trees were cut down, and I did voice that opinion to you back in January. I thank you very much for listening to me this evening. I thank you very much for listening to me this evening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is David Wood, I live at 1218 South Country Club Drive. I used to live at 1242 Ruffner Road, and I used to live at 1222 Hedgewood Lane. So, I have a history with the golf course, I was a member of the golf course for 50 years, and I'm here to speak against this plan. The current dimensions on the road, it's 60 feet, I've been back there and measured. The space between the green that Mohawk recently extended, which they spent quite a bit of money, extending that green backwards towards Ruffner, is only 40 feet. So, I don't see how this paper road is going to make that bend and get into this neighborhood that is proposed. There's only a 40-foot section there. The, just to touch on a few things, the path for the connection, that was looked at a long time ago, to have one run the entire length of the hole, and that's why the town put the current sidewalk on Rosendale Road. This plan was abandoned due to the fact that people would be injured with golf balls. I live at 1218 South Country Club, we get lots of golf balls. I can tell you that it would not be a safe place for a path. You would need that path, that thing to be enclosed in a cage, which they've done at other golf courses. It's not real pretty, but it could be done. The trees people have touched on, Mohawk has cut out several pine forests, and the coyote population in this forest now is increased due to that fact. We see them, we hear them on a regular basis. I wanted to touch on the fact that this property was something that the club had always looked at, considered looking at to sell, if they ran into financial difficulties. But the course is privately owned now, and Michael Rutherford has done a nice job at maintaining the course. He has spent quite a bit of money on the clubhouse, I see the equipment that goes up and down the golf course on a regular basis, there's lots of new equipment. So, he spent a lot of money, and I'm curious as to now, why he's looking to sell this land. It just seems as if it was poorly planned and rushed. I, I'm against it, and that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in this room? Before we move on to the next room, come on up, please.
Hi. I'm Marlene Louts, I live at 1191 Ruffner Road, where the proposed new road would be going. And I agree with what everybody has said tonight, I love the eloquence and all the information and the technical, everything that's happening on here, that's been said. And I've made some notes tonight, hoping that I can be a little more coherent. Obviously, I'm in opposition to this. At the last meeting, after the privilege of the floor, after I had spoken and said that you were making my home into a corner lot, after privilege was over, I heard someone, I think the chairman, say, "Well, she's had two front yards for years." And the truth is, on paper, I have known that that paper road was there. But it's also true that I have lived on a golf course before, I lived on the Alma Down Golf Course, and that's still thriving, and it's still there, the house is still as it was when we left it in 19 whatever. So, we left that house, moved to Europe, and came back, and this is the first house we've owned since we owned that house on the golf course. So, when we saw the paper road, we had every expectation of thinking it was not going to be developed, because that was not vacant land behind us, that was not a farmland behind us, that was already developed land with a fence, and a golf course that appeared to be prosperous, as the one in San Jose was. So, we had every expectation that that was going to stay as it is. So, I don't have two front yards. If you walk down the street, you'll see what is a nice-sized side yard, which we have maintained for over 40 years. So, there's that. There's also the fact that, when I was a young woman, a much younger woman, I worked for the Bucks County, Pennsylvania Planning Commission, and not in any planning capacity. But I was used to hearing people talk about highest and best use of the land. And that mostly means, I think, having to do with the net worth of the land, how to make it the most financially feasible. But I think in this case, the highest and best use of that land is as it is now, as a wildlife sanctuary, that's just evolved and is there. So, I'm clearly opposed. I think that this drawing was done in haste, I don't think all the information is on there that was on the original plan, you don't see the impact of the neighbors, of the driveways, and of the other things. I just think, as someone else said, this is not an inclusive thing, this is a strange aboriginal subdivision that's just been tacked on with fences around it. So, I don't think it's planning to become part of our neighborhood, and I truly hope it does not. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shawshon Avule, and I live at 1119 Ruffner Road, and I have spoken to you guys a number of times before. I too oppose the development in its entirety. I wanted to make one point that I think was made before, that I just want to reiterate, and that is, if you find yourselves in the position of, for whatever reason, having to approve the development in its current location, I suggest that instead of destroying the neighborhood that everyone here has been talking about by having the ingress and egress points be from our road, to consider the many other curb cuts that the club already has, and the minimal disruption to the club that it would be to expand a cart road to get and connect up with this proposed subdivision. Every day, I bring my child to Union College to swim and back, and I drive by, and recently I've taken to counting the curb cuts, I cut through Mayfair, and I look at them all, I look at South Country Club, and then I look at North Country Club, and I look at Ball Town, and I look at Route 7, and I, I mean, I look, I look at, not Route 7, I look at Ball Town and Union, and I think, boy, there are so many ways into this club already, why do they need to destroy our entire neighborhood to get into this development, when they could just, if they feel that they have to put the development here, because it's adjacent to a nice neighborhood, and they don't want to put it next to Ball Town Road where they have lots of property they could convert to houses, they want to put it near our houses because it makes it nicer, why can't they put the access road somewhere else? That's the bottom line for me, I don't want the development at all, but I understand that if you have to approve the development in its current location, I would suggest that you have them access it from one of their existing curb cuts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Normden, 2163 Knott Street, so I'm not even close to this. But I will say this, I've heard a couple of concerns, and just to say, you know, I get trying to plan our future, and there are things that we do now that impact our town forever. And things like this disrupt the feel of the neighborhood. And there are ways to develop within a neighborhood that works with it, and it doesn't seem like this is that. And it doesn't seem like, you know, I've got so many conflicting things here, you know, I know that lots of low-density housing causes housing crisis, and, you know, we've got a housing crisis in the nation. But there's better places for developments like this than where it's at. This is not the feel of the neighborhood. Things like more natural gas connections, you know, maybe look at that. Hearing that they want to be able to do construction from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, seven days a week, I've lived near construction before, there is absolutely no peace in quiet, the sound travels. It will, for two years, just, I mean, think about having that right across the street from you, every day, near your house, for two years, no weekends, being able to sleep in, your kids can't sleep in, if your kids are sick, oh, well, they're getting woken up. You know, these are the impacts that we tend not to really let sink in when we're looking at stuff like this, you know? You're giving no respite to the residents here if you approve seven-day-a-week construction. They get no time off, no time for their mental health, to regain, no opportunities to just have a weekend off from the noise and everything else that they're having to deal with. So, I mean, even though I don't live near here, I would say that if you do have to approve something, why can't it be in the flavor of the neighborhood? Right? It doesn't have to be this. If they really want to develop something, it can be something that fits with the neighborhood. But it doesn't seem like they've made that option, they haven't put that effort into it. And if you do have to approve construction there, think about what you're doing to the health and well-being of the people that have to live. Make it so that it is something that, you know, isn't going to impact them in the long term. I mean, this is, anyway, you put in a subdevelopment, you can't help that it's going to impact the people around you. But think about what you're doing to their lifestyles and their well-being for the time that that construction's going on. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is David Amorio, I live at 1382 Rose Hill Boulevard, at the very foot of Ruffner Road, where all the water flows right now, too much of it flows already. I am concerned about more runoff flowing through our property, through our backyard and the field in the back. And I just want to go on record as opposing this development, for all the reasons that everyone has already mentioned this here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else in this meeting room that would like to speak before we, oop, here we go?
Good evening, Giorgio Chapado, 1200 Ruffner Road, I live across the street from Josh and Marty. I was just wondering, is, if this is a financial issue, I will, and I'm completely against the project, I think the best solution for them would be to be a semi-private golf club. And I think that will solve a lot of their problems. And also, there's rumor that the stadium golf club could close, and I believe if it's the case, I think they'd be flourishing, and their business will be way much better.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have anybody else there that wishes to speak, out in the foyer? No? Okay, no one out there? Anybody here, before we go online, anybody else out here? Okay.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Mike Mason, I live at 2144 Mountain View Avenue, within the 500-foot radius of whatever entrance they want to put in, and I violently oppose it. And I have, you know, I have so many oppositions, so much opposition to it, that I can't list them all, but, and I did send a letter to be shared with the Board, and I can just summarize them. For, one thing I oppose is connecting the Ruffner Road neighborhood with the Mohawk Golf Club. They're totally different entities, they have nothing to do with each other, as far as I know, and all of a sudden, this huge piece of land wants to chip off a little piece, and they don't even want to support it. They want Ruffner Road to support their dream. What do you do with 190 acres? Save it? There's a proposed walkway. Well, we don't need a walkway between two roads without walkways, and right now, there is a walkway, it's a sidewalk on Rosendale Road, and it comes from Country Club Estates right down to Ruffner Road. And then it goes on to Hedgewood, and it goes on to Rose Hill, well, that's the end of it, but those roads are all connected now. And that didn't happen, but maybe, I don't know, 10 or 15 years ago. And that may be the very reason that that was a golf ball hazard, and that's maybe why the road is on Rose Hill. And if I look at that rendering, that's not the right-of-way, that right-of-way wasn't put in there to service that land. Where's the rest of it? No, I don't see it. And my experience with right-aways is, there's a road, and then there's so many feet on either side. Look at that right-of-way, there is nothing on one side of it. There's a road, no right-of-way, and all the right-of-ways on the other side. Look at the cul-de-sac, I never saw a cul-de-sac that looked like that. No, I mean, gee, that's an odd-looking thing, you know? And there's all this talk about paper streets, well, that one's been there for at least 50 years, in my mind, there was never any intention to use it. And as time went on, that intention to use it had decreased all the way, and no one stated why that thing is even there. But people don't willy-nilly throw in right-aways or paper streets with no intent. So, what's the intent? The developer didn't share it with us, that's for sure. And my other, I, you know, my other concerns are similar to the concerns you've heard here tonight. So, with all due respect, you know, I hope you've heard the concerns, and I believe that you will factor them in and try to preserve our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Board for listening to all our concerns tonight. My name is Stephen Clemente, I'm speaking for myself and my wife Kathy at 1231 Ruffner Road. I've submitted some questions to the Board, so I'll try and summarize these quickly in my five-minute time span, because I think these questions are important, you have a copy of this from Laura, to actually have the public be informed as to what's happening in the process and what's occurring. We stand in opposition to the development wholeheartedly, and I ask it respectfully, do this either in writing or at one of the future meetings in your findings, or however it happens. We don't know if it's even legal for a house in the town of Niskuna to have roadways surrounding it on three sides, the way that it's currently proposed in the current schematic. Is that even possible, to have your house surrounded on three sides by a road in Niskuna? Secondly, what is the allowable width of the street onto Ruffner Road as proposed for the dead-end ingress and egress? Is there a fire code or a town code that requires a certain width, and what is it? And how do you fit it in that roadway? Ruffner Road's only about 25 or 30 feet wide as it is, and I'm interested in what that egress road is going to entail, and so are many of my neighbors. Has an independent review of the long-form environmental impact study been submitted, submitted by the developer, been completed, analyzed, and reported back? I understand that the engineer, the engineering firm that the town is going to have is going to review that environmental impact form. If not, when is it expected? Are Weston and Sampson Engineering designated to complete that in a certain timeframe as part of the process? We're all interested in their analysis, understanding what some of the deficiencies are, living right next to the piece of property from a water standpoint, a sewer standpoint, and a groundwater standpoint. Has a town engineering sewer and water supply been completed to assess the impact on the 22 housing units being added to the existing sewer system on Ruffner Road and Rosendale Road? This is something that we expect, we expect our Board from a due diligence standpoint to do this stuff, this is part of the job. And if it's not contracted, then why isn't it being presented as part of the plan from the Mohawk Golf Club? As stated previously, certain segments of the systems are already considered at capacity by the town, we can't go towards Ruffner Road because that's at capacity, one of the speakers here last two weeks ago mentioned that specifically. So, we're concerned, who's going to bear the financial burden of creating the capacity if the capacity- if the capacity doesn't exist for that sewer system or that water system? Is that going to be passed on to the taxpayers of Niskiuna? We want to hear that. We want to hear it from the board on a recommendation. Would like to know what their thoughts are. These are all details that are extremely critical in the analysis of this, this, this process. They're technical, yes, but they're critical to us as taxpayers. Have the Town Conservation Advisory Board and the Tree Committees completed their reviews of the proposed Mohawk Golf Project? When is that review required? And who needs to see it? Does it go to the Planning Board? Does it go to the Town Board? Where, where do the reports get considered? That's what we're interested in. Those are key components. There's a lot of trees on Ruffner Road. And we'd like to make sure that the ones in that woodlot are preserved, if at all possible. Should the concerns of a privately-held commercial golf course, Mohawk Golf Club, outweigh the concerns of the Ruffner Road neighborhood with hundreds of residents paying more in property taxes and school taxes than the Mohawk Golf Club? That's a fact. There's 150 people and more now that are interested in stopping this project. And if you take a look at the revenue of all those people, it drastically dwarfs what, what a private club is currently paying. So, our concerns continue to be the significant change to the character of the neighborhood, which I think is the most important. The sewer capacity and the cost issue, the water capacity and the cost issue, and the safety for all the young families that are moving into our neighborhood. And there are lots of them. And the pets, and the bikers, and the walkers, and the runners. No sidewalks on Ruffner Road or any of the adjoining properties and streets in the neighborhood. And of course, as was eloquently brought up by many people, is the green space and the environmental effect, including all the resident animals in the woodlots, as part of the golf course and part of this 14 acres. In conclusion, we urge the board to require an independent analysis of the full environmental impact study long-form and to document the deficiencies in the Mohawk Golf Club's proposal as it stands, as many of my neighbors have alluded to tonight. And our sincere thanks for your, uh, for the, to the board for listening to our concerns and giving us kind consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in this room?
Hi, I'm Kathy Carlock. I, I live on Story Avenue. So, I just wanted to come out and, and, um, support the local people on Ruffner Road. Because I've been on Story Avenue for 25 years, and I love where I live. But as well, many of you know that you don't go up and down Story Avenue. A lot of people don't. And 25 years ago, the traffic on Story Avenue was not what it is today. Now, we have Google Maps, and we have tractor-trailer trucks coming up Story Avenue. So, I'm only telling you, first of all, that we never lose our power. I don't know why. And if we do, it's only for a couple hours. So, I'm sorry for all of you on Ruffner Road. But also that to, when you're deciding, is this supposed to be coming up for a vote for? Because I only got this, this week, and I was wondering, do the Niskiuna taxpayers, do, are we going to vote on this?
No.
Oh, okay. So, I guess what my concern would be is that 25 years from now, what will it be like in that area? And that you might want to just consider, you know, um, where I've been on Story Avenue was a quiet street years ago. 25 years later, we have tractor-trailer trucks coming up, and we have all kinds of issues. So, I just, I'm here to support my neighbors on Ruffner Road, and, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
So, you have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Hey, Laura. Nobody else here? We can, uh, you have a, I'm sure you have a list of people online.
So, um, you know he wanted to speak within the first hour, but I, is Aiden Schweitzer still online? Christopher Morris was here. Carrie Kirkton?
So, Terry, what?
Carrie Kirkton? I see her on there. If you would like to speak, um, you have to unmute yourself.
And also, you mentioned Mr. Aide, but he also submitted something in writing too. So, we do have his comments also?
I'll have to follow up with him, but I don't think I have anything in writing from him.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Kirkton. I saw you unmute for a second. You had it unmuted if you'd like to speak.
Am I unmuted?
Yep, you're good now.
Oh, thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. I am at 1322 Ruffner Road, and again, just voicing my opposition to this entire project. And again, there were so many people that spoke so eloquently tonight. So, I am not going to attempt to reiterate many of those points. Again, I would just urge the board to really look at that town plan, review it in its entirety, especially those showers and the main, the maintenance of the neighborhood of Ruffner Road, and without doing detrimental harm to those around. It just, it strikes me as, and, and everything I've heard tonight, that the desires of so few should not overpower the concerns of so many. There are so many people there, I'm sure, in that room tonight. And I've heard, I've listened to every single one of you speak, and it's been wonderful. And we, we do appreciate the opportunity for us to have our voices heard on this. And to reflect, I would just ask the Town Board, really do some very serious thinking, reflect on these concerns and everything you've heard between safety, traffic, our children. I loved too, hearing from the younger adults in the room tonight as well. And so, so true that, I mean, this is exactly, this is the future of this, um, this, this neighborhood, this community. And Niskiuna clearly had a very special place in their heart as well. So, um, I would just ask and urge you to take all of these things into consideration. And, um, again, and my, my other main point really is the environment itself. And it always makes me think of a Joni Mitchell song. Sorry to be sort of a, kind of sappy, sappy about it. But it just, I always think of that line that, don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got until it's gone? And I would just urge you to really think about that as this plan were to develop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, I have Michael Vanudi. Michael, if you, if you hover your cursor over your screen, the, the microphone button should sort of pop up in the middle, and you can just click on it, hopefully. It's also, you, usually at the bottom of the screen, you'll have a row of buttons. And one of them will be red with like a kind of microphone with a slash through it, and you want to it anymore. Ms. Kirkton, can you mute yourself, please? Thank you. Um, alternatively, Michael, you can also use the phone to call in if you would like to speak. And we can wait for you to try that if you want to. Whoops. Is William Howe online? Or on the phone? If you, um, if you're on the phone, sometimes you have to press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is William Howe. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great, hi, William Howe. I reside at 1270 Ruffner Road, uh, calling in opposition to the Mohawk Road project. I am a civil engineer with more than 30 years' experience, most recently as Director of Contracts for the New York Department of Transportation. In that time, I have seen hundreds, indeed thousands, of projects, bridges, roads, and developments. And in that time, I've learned to identify a good project from a bad project. My fellow residents and board members, this is a bad project. You don't have to take my word for it. We've all heard about the problems with traffic and safety, with the environment, and with the burden on our town's water, sewer, and power infrastructure. But I would just like to quote, uh, one of the town planning, uh, members who said, "This development appears to have made no consideration for either the adjacent property or the golf course itself. They only tried to put as many buildings as possible in the area which they wanted to develop. This is the essence of bad development." I'd also like to quote the chairman of the Planning Board, who stated that this was the hardest project submitted for approval in his time. What that means is that this is the worst project that has been submitted for many, many years. In my opinion, approving it would be a tragedy for the town. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Yep, Mr. Vanudi, you've unmuted yourself. Go ahead.
Yep, okay, thank you. Michael Vanudi and my wife, Joy Neiman, 1149 Ruffner Road. We are both opposed to the proposal by the Mohawk Golf Club for the residential development as proposed. And, um, you know, as I look at this currently, it seems that the golf club has been, to a degree, coexisting, or maybe better said, uh, in balance with the Ruffner Road and the larger community by doing what they do, by providing recreational opportunities and social activities for their members. And more importantly, for us as, as neighbors, also serving as an open-space corridor within our community. Unfortunately, the proposed site plan to create a residential setting within the golf course may create a series of imbalances, especially as it relates to the impacts of the environment, the neighborhood, and ultimately, the residents. The impacts on the development, uh, they have on the environment, you've heard, you've heard many times tonight, and I, I won't go into that. But it, it is no secret that Niskiuna is truly a gem of a town. It's comprised of a variety of unique neighborhoods and residents who take pride in living in this community. This sense of uniqueness is real because of the town's ongoing cohesive planning efforts, and obviously thoughtful process that has guided the town to where it is today. The proposal in front of you seems, the proposal in front of you today seems or feels somewhat different. It feels more invasive, with multiple structures being proposed within sight of established, uh, older residences. An access road is proposed between established homes. Imagine what this feels like as a resident in the zone, I'll call it the zone of development, to know that these proposed changes will impact a sense of peace at home, their investment, and the character of the community, which you've heard many times this evening. Simply, this just doesn't seem right. It doesn't feel fair. And I urge you to maintain our unique Niskiuna setting, our gem of a town, by not approving the special-use permit for this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I had a couple late joiners, and I'm not sure if they wanted to speak or not. I know that some people, they joined the Google Meet to watch the meeting. You can actually watch the meeting on YouTube, um, which is sometimes a nicer way to watch the meeting. But Kathleen Lucero, I know you've had some trouble connecting, but I do see you now. Are you interested in speaking under the public hearing? And anybody who's not able to, um, comment can always email me, and I'll make sure that the comments are passed on. I also have Barbara Milano, a Dia Schlossberg, and a Catherine Mentor. Okay, so that's my whole list, Chairman.
Okay. I'll make a last call for anybody online. Anybody wishing to speak? Just unmute yourself and give us, give us a try.
Go ahead, Juliana.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep. Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, they can. Hello, my name is Philip Mentor. I live on 1318 Row Road. And we'd like to say our household is vehemently opposed to this project. I think we see it as, uh, really an abuse, uh, to a really beautiful little community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have two raised hands. Juliana Postgood, would you like to unmute yourself? Go ahead.
Am I unmuted?
Yep, we can hear you.
Excellent. Juliana Postgood, 1169 Highland Park Road. I have written down how many people have spoken tonight. And apart from the opening remarks, um, everyone is in opposition to this, all of us who live in the neighborhood. That is something that should be taken into serious consideration, particularly because with the 30 or so individuals who have spoken, that's representational of all the families that were unable to participate in this meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I also have a raised hand from Rebecca Shirt-Liff.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, I wasn't planning on speaking because I've already submitted some notes, but, um, it sounded like the group wanted to hear from some of the younger, uh, generation in the neighborhood. And as a 30-year-old new homeowner, um, I wanted to share our thoughts as well. So, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, and we live at 1324 Row Road. Um, and we've heard how, over the past few months alongside our neighbors, there have been a lot of concerns around the Mohawk Golf Club and this proposed housing development. We want to once again state our direct opposition to this proposal in any and all forms that would impact these surrounding neighborhoods, and in particular, the character, traffic patterns, and infrastructure. The character of the neighborhood is honestly what drew us here. We fell in love with the peace and quiet, the landscape, and how the houses here are affordable, even with the taxes. Um, and really, it has a charm that cannot be replicated in new construction. To us, it really came down to finding a suburban home that didn't look like the cookie-cutter developments you see popping up all over the capital region. As someone else stated earlier, the area is truly a gem. And over the past few weeks, listening to these meetings, we've learned that this is really intentional through the top-town comprehensive plan. We understand that should the development move forward, the construction noise is going to impact our peace and quiet. It's really going to alter the residential landscape with the destruction of green space that so many others have mentioned. Um, and we've also yet to see renderings for the housing that they're intending to build. So, there's no guarantee that the charm of these homes, or that the charm of the surrounding homes can or will be replicated. All of this seems to come in direct opposition to the comprehensive plan. We've also heard concerns around the proposed roadways and the traffic patterns that are going to change because of this. We're also concerned about the heavy equipment that's needed for development and how it's going to lead to quicker destruction of the roadways and increased maintenance, which also disrupts traffic. There's also resulting safety concerns. We previously voiced concern about the safety of people drinking on the golf course and exiting onto new streets into a neighborhood of kids and pets and families. I want to reiterate this concern after hearing the new information several weeks ago, when the Mohawk Golf Club openly encouraged drinking, uh, through an open-bar party that they held to rally their members, many of whom do not reside in this neighborhood, in favor of their proposal. Finally, our primary concern is about the local infrastructure and the toll that the development is going to take on local resources. We've already heard the asks or confirmation or studies on how this development is going to impact the systems and services we have in place. And we also just want to reiterate the same concern for the electrical grid and the flooding issues that we experience in our own backyard. So far, the representatives in the Mohawk Golf Club have not offered concrete answers to these concerns, instead stating that they're, they should not be an issue. To me, this phrase "should" is not reassuring, and instead shows a complete lack of planning or foresight into what could become a financial disaster down the road. Personally, we believe their dedication to seeing this development through, even if it means adding grinder pumps to 750,000 um, even if it means adding grinder pumps to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, is a little bit admirable and also asinine, because I don't know if, about anyone else, but if I'm spending over half a million dollars on a home, I don't want to manage the disposal of my own waste. Um, we understand that the property owner has every right to develop their land, but the proposals put forth by the golf club come at a greater expense of neighboring property owners than the club itself. They've made it clear through their statements in public forums that they are unwilling to compromise, despite being made aware that alternate options exist. Um, at thirty years old, we assume we're some of the younger homeowners in the area, um, and we've heard nothing but wonderful things from neighbors who have lived here, many of whom who have been here longer than we've been alive. Um, but it's amazing to see and to hear about the history and to see what can happen in the future. We're really concerned about the next thirty years and the precedent that this development sets for the future of Ruffner Road and the Niskiuna community at large. We're concerned that if the current proposals move forward, the board is favoring for-profit development over its own comprehensive plan and the community members that is elected to serve. I appreciate the due diligence that you're all putting into this and for the consideration of these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online? Last call for online. Hello, in the room, give you one more opportunity before we move to, uh, at least summarizing the letters and emails that we've received so far. Anybody else want to speak? Okay. You can go ahead, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I did receive a lot of letters for the record. I am not, I am not reading them into the record, um, but I am acknowledging, sorry, acknowledging them, and I will be passing them, well, I have passed most of them to the planning board and the town board. They'll need some time to read them. Um, and, um, I did get a couple just right before the meeting, which I'll also include, um, probably, uh, Wednesday morning. So, letters for the record in support include a letter from Mark Gaimza at 1134 Millington. Letters, uh, for the record against include Beth Chapados, 1200 Ruffner Road, Carol Randall's, Zoe Schlesinger, 1354 Row Road, Alicia Smith, 1161 South Country Drive Club, uh, Craig Lynch, 1249 Hawthorne, Margaret Corey, 2529 Hilltop Road, Joel McDonald, 1317 Ruffner Road, main opposition to access point, um, Hendrick Arnold, 1406 Fox Hollow Road, Rita Fleishman, 1353 Wemple Ave, Susan Mason, 2144 Mountain View Ave, Ruth Gilbert, 2150 Mountain View Ave, George Young, 1241 Ruffner Road, Maureen Warner, Richard Kaler, Michael Mason, 2144 Mountain View Ave, Jane Alun, 2151 Mountain View Ave, Carol Furman, 1269 Ruffner Road. Susan Olsen submitted some questions to the board. Christopher Morris, 1917 Mayfair Road. Stephen Clemente, 1231 Ruffner Road, uh, submitted questions for the board. Becky Thomas, 1265 Ruffner Road. Amy Pritchard, 1241 Ruffner Road. Rebecca Shirtlift, 1324 Row Road. Uh, a couple of the new ones I got were from Ursula Hall, uh, and Ronaldo Maiarini. Um, and then I wanted to acknowledge a phone call that my department received earlier today from Mary Frances Miller, 1191 Hedwood Lane, who was opposed.
Yeah, thank you, Laura. And, uh, they will be attached. You said it wouldn't be part of the record, but it will be part of the record. Anything we send will be attached in the minutes.
Correct. Yeah, I was gonna do that for the public hearing.
Yeah, for the public hearing, yep. Okay, thank you. All right, last call before I close, uh, the public hearing. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Thank you for your comments and thank you for your time. We appreciate it. We do have quite, uh, the agenda ahead of us tonight with some working stuff. We will get back to, uh, 1851 Union Street, Ruffner Road later on in the meeting, uh, to hear, uh, just to get an update where things stand. We'll have a board discussion. Obviously, you're welcome to stay, but, you know, it'll be on YouTube if you're not able to stay tonight. So, thank you, everyone. All right, so, uh, the public hearing's closed. Next up is privilege of the floor, and we'll give everybody a second to, um, move on out.
Excuse me. Where's everyone going? Two hours, like, an hour and a half or two.
Had some new people.
Yep, yeah.
Bye, bye.
Yeah, somebody's brought that up. I don't know if it was you, but that was, it was in one of our discussions at one time, you know. You know. Okay, um, we have, uh, you know, meeting in progress here. Uh, clear roads of the floor is gonna be open next. So, anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning zoning matters in a town in Niskiuna, please come to the microphone, state your name and, uh, and address for the record. So, privilege of the floor is open. And by, and by the way, uh, regarding, uh, the Mohawk Golf Club, you're welcome to, to repeat your comments. There's, it's not necessary because, you know, the public hearing, we have captured all those. If you have any additional information to add that you missed, you're always welcome to speak at privilege of the floor.
Hi, my name's, uh, Dan Lang. I don't, I live in Rotterdam.
Yeah, you better hold up till they close the door so we can make sure we get you, okay? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Could you, yeah, somebody close that door? Thank you very much, Trish.
Uh, my name's Dan Lang. I'm one of the owners of Flang's Pharmacy. Uh, we also own the building that the broken in is in. I know that there, they have a proposal, uh, coming up for you guys for the, their outdoor area. Um, my concern right now is the pe, the striping of the parking lot. I understand the town wants to do something at the corner, at some, the corner of Crescent Road and Clifton Park and that whole mess, but without striping it the way it is now, just an open, blacktop, do-whatever-you-want area, you've already lowered our parking by eliminating our parking lot that was across the street, and now, without striping it, if a car parks four or five feet away from another car, and that happens all the way down the parking lot, that parking lot's capacity has been cut in half. Now, I personally have been striping the parking lot for twenty-five years, and I've done it with a can and a walker with a wheel and a tape measure, and it would take me an hour on a Sunday morning. I don't understand the delay in striping it. When they paved it last year, I made the point that, you know, we need to stripe it because winter's coming, and winter came, and it was not striped. Well, spring's here, and the parking lot's open again, and it's still not striped. And I understand there's some opposition to actually striping it, and I want to ask the board, please, if you guys don't want to do it, you expect me to plow it and maintain it, then let me stripe it. Irregardless of what happens with Mr. Nicky and the broken in, the parking lot there, just for the safety of the people there. Eight years ago, we started meetings about changing the whole parking lot structure. The first thing I said was, we need to clearly delineate where you drive, where you park, and where you walk. And while that's been accomplished to a degree in the front, the back is suffering from the exact same thing. There's no clear place of where you park or where you walk, you know? And without it, it's, it's suffering not only my business, not only Mr. Nicky's business, but the co-op today had the front parking lot dug up because they were fixing the manhole cover that they covered. Well, where do you think all those people parked? They parked down by us and walked up, plus all the people in the neighborhood that parked there and walked up. It needs, something needs to be done. We can't wait forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, privilege of the floor. Anybody else?
Richard Norman, 2163 Knott Street. I basically live across from the broken in. Um, I also own the property directly across from the broken in, so, um, I guess I start off, when, you know, he first came around, signed the petition, I was, I was more than happy to sign, you know? I like the idea of having space. I gotta say, he's great at what he does. Uh, he's done a lot to, you know, support the community. He's got the thing. There's been a lot of really positive things that, that he has done. And I've pretty much supported him since day one on that. Even let him use some of my, uh, empty dumpster space when he was doing his renovations. You know, I believe in being neighborly and all that. Um, I will say that I definitely do have some concerns around the proposal. If it's really just gonna be seating for people eating ice cream, I, that's great. It's an ideal scene, very Norman, Rockwell-ish, you know? Families gathering around a table, eating ice cream, and it's dripped in the summer heat. I get it. I'm all for that kind of thing. My concern comes from what else, all right? I mean, by my best estimation, he's probably done about a million dollars worth of business already, and that was even with the construction and everything. I, my concern is what else, right? You know, six tables, that's at a bare minimum, you know, four to eight people, he's saying per, per table. That's somewhere between twenty-four and forty-eight extra people. Four extra parking spots being eaten up by twenty-four to forty-eight extra people, that's actually a net loss. I'm all for a table or two, benches, something for families. My concern comes from the what else? You know, what else does this do to, to the value or, and the feel of our neighborhood? Are there going to be people gathering outside with their drinks because it's hot inside, so they want to be outside, and they're, you know, having their drinks and they're making noise? Or they, somebody wants to smoke, so, you know, the crowd goes outside. Who's monitoring? Who's monitoring that for noise? No table service, well, that doesn't say anything about somebody can't order a meal or drinks inside and carry it out, right? And again, I'm, I'm all for the positive impact that the place has already had on, on the, on the neighborhood. I'm not gonna try and say that it hasn't. I'm all for it. I go there for myself for dinners, and I brought my kids there, you know? They love the ice cream. They go sit down. They love the chicken tenders. I get it. It's a great place, but my concern is, you know, I've gone down there because on game nights, they had the door propped open because it was hot inside, and the cheers of the crowd are coming down to keep my kids with me. And that's two houses down. Never mind the people that are living right across from me, you know? What about, you know, if, if you have an outdoor space, what's the capacity for it? How many people do you allow there? Do you allow alcoholics out there? Like, what are the rules for this space going to be? You know, we already have problems now with Crescent Street with all the overflow parking. Crescent Street has basically turned into a one-lane street at times because you got people parking on both sides of the street. You got the apartment complex on the one side, and you've got people for the restaurant on the other. And you'll see that, you know, certain times of night, you can't, you can't have cars going in opposite directions on, on Crescent Street. So, um, you know, I've seen trucks that used to back up to do deliveries are now parking, you know, on Clifton Park Road as well. Um, so, I get it, but my concern is the what else? You know, it's this now. What is it in here? What is it in two? There's been times where the broken in's bent a few rules. I get it. You want to celebrate the Niskiuna High School football team. Great. But it kept the business open after the agreed-upon hours. New Year's Eve, open past hours. Certain sports team days, open past hours. You know, I get that there's a certain thing about doing it for the community and supporting the community and things like that, but my concern is the what else? And who's responsible for it? Who has to monitor it, you know? If there's no table service out there, is an employee gonna be out there monitoring how things are going? If people are out there with their drinks and whatever else? No, there's, there's not, so. Um, like I said, you know, I, I, I get it. Um, there are certain aspects of it that I'm absolutely all for. You know, again, if it's, if it's for, for people with ice cream and that's the limit of it, we're like, all right, no alcoholic drinks outside, you know, none of this, none of that, that's great. I just want to make sure that we consider the impact. Um, much like the noise with the, the golf course, there's nothing but hard-edged buildings there with lots of brick and everything else. The noise, rubber brakes, there's no way to absorb that noise. A couple planters are not gonna do it. So, you know, I'd just like you to, to think about how you would feel living across from that, eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night, what you, if you live there, what you would want to set the parameters for that space to be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for privilege of the floor? Last call. All right. Thank you for your comments, and we'll close privilege of the floor, and we'll move on the agenda. We have no unfinished business tonight, but we do have, uh, several resolutions under new business. Uh, first resolution being Resolution 2023-09, amendment to Resolution 2023-06, this is for sketch plan approval for a subdivision, uh, Antonio Park, Paulsonelli Drive. Uh, resolutions, all resolutions are posted. I am gonna summarize some key points of the resolutions, um, for the record. So, in this resolution, I'm just gonna, it's pretty straightforward. Further resolve that this planning board does hereby call for a public hearing to be held Monday, April 17th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, Niskiuna Town Hall, 1 Niskiuna Circle, to consider the application of Fred Paulsonelli for a two-lot minor subdivision, including a lot line adjustment for Homestead Place at Antonio Park, a tax map parcel, forty dot dash one dash fifty-four dash eleven. And that's it. So, I have a motion for approval of the resolution.
I still move.
Uh, move by Ms. Gold for adoption. Have a second?
Second.
And second by Mr. Khan. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll? Well, sorry, sorry. It's a very discussion. Uh, the only thing I'd like to add is that, uh, we previously called for a, a public hearing. We weren't able to pull it off. So, basically, this resolution, uh, recalls for that same public hearing, so, uh, my understanding is it's basically the same resolution except for a date change, and we will have a short discussion under, uh, later on regarding this subject, okay? Any other comments or concerns regarding the resolution? Okay, hearing done. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Dorpino.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Ms. Strang.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. Motion carries. The resolution's approved. Thank you, and we'll talk about that again in a little while. Second, uh, resolution type is Resolution 2023-10, a resolution for site plan approval for a new facade and ATM signage at the Chase Bank located at 2321 Knott Street East. That's in the ShopRite Plaza. Uh, on this one here, and again, uh, I've been uploaded, uh, resolve that the planning board and zoning commission has determined that the proposed sign waivers, as described above, would have a minimum negative effect on the aesthetics. Those waivers include, uh, for the colors for the, uh, uh, ATM mounted at the, the face of the building. Uh, and the ATM incorporates a sign and colors. Uh, the colors aren't usually allowed in the town center overlay district, but, uh, we're gonna, if this is approved, we're gonna grant those waivers. Further resolve that the planning board and zoning commission does hereby grant said waivers to allow for the signage as described in a seven-page document entitled Niskiun North by Philadelphia Signs Stamp 31523, and be further resolved that this planning board and zoning commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirement of the zoning code and previous site plans approval, and therefore hereby approves this site plan. Uh, no project leads, so I'll make a motion that we approve the signage and the waivers.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gold. Any discussion? Yeah, pretty straightforward here. Uh, we talked about this at our last meeting. The board was comfortable with the submittal by the applicant, uh, and, uh, that's pretty much it. And, uh, obviously, uh, if this is approved, uh, we welcome Chase Bank, uh, being, uh, coming to the ShopRite Plaza. So, thank you. Any other comments at all? Mr. Henry, please call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Dorpino.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Ms. Strang.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. Uh, resolution's approved, and again, uh, welcome to the community and, uh, look forward to you being there. All right? Next resolution, I don't know, do we have anybody online from Chase Bank? No, okay. All right, uh, next resolution, I'm losing it here. Uh, okay, Resolution, uh, 2023-11, a resolution for site plan approval for a tenant change in northeast under layments under pre-existing non-conforming interior storage use at 31 East Street. I think I, I lost that one somehow. Yeah, there it is. Yeah, there it is. I'm old-fashioned, I gotta have paper, sorry.
Chairman Walsh, I'll be recusing myself from this one.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Strang will be sitting in, oh, she, you're already sitting in for Mr. Scrub Lieutenant, so Mr. Drescher will take your seat on this one, all right? Thank you, Mr. Dorpino. Resolve that the planning board and zoning commission, acting in accordance with the state environmental quality review regulations and local law, has determined that this project will not have a significant effect on the environment, and hereby directs the town planner to file a negative declaration. And be it resolved, the planning board and zoning commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of zoning code and previous site plan approvals, and therefore hereby approves this site plan with the following conditions. One, the property is to be used for interior storage only, no outdoor storage is allowed. Two, the proposed office area must be incidental to the interior storage and shall not exceed 320 square feet, including the 36-square-foot bathroom. Three, all vehicles and trailers parked on site are to be licensed and operational. No storage of inoperative vehicles is allowed. Four, a thick vegetative buffer or privacy fence is required to be maintained on the property owner in perpetuity to adequately screen the adjacent residents from highlights and noise associated with the parking spots between the front of the building and East Street. Five, prior to issuance of a building permit, the Niskuna Architectural Board shall review and approve any architectural design features to the site that help it blend in with the surrounding rural residential neighborhood. Six, the landscaping notes in the above referenced site plan do not create inadequate buffer as recommended by the Zoning Board of Appeals and Conservation Advisory Council. And therefore, the applicant will work on a final landscaping plan approved by the tree council that shall supersede the landscaping notes provided. Prior to issuance of a final certificate of occupancy for the building, the Niskuna Tree Council shall review and approve the final landscaping plan, including species type and final locations, including the parking lot buffer or fence, and the vegetative buffers to the surrounding residences, Mohawk Hudson Bike Trail also. Prior to issuance of a building permit, this is condition seven, all site grading and engineering shall be addressed to satisfaction of the Town Engineering Department. Mr. Laflamme, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Laflamme, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Strang, and we'll have some discussion. Do we have the applicant online for this one? Okay, I know she was online earlier.
Yeah, I think I see her.
Yeah, is it Conus?
Yeah, Ms. Conus, sometimes you have to press star six to unmute yourself.
She's on the phone?
Yeah, she calls in on the phone.
Yeah, star six? Yeah, the only thing I want to ask, I just wanted to make sure that she had an opportunity to read the conditions and where she had any concerns with any of them.
I did call her and spoke to her about, especially the landscaping one. So she's aware of that, she was amenable to that originally. Her engineer had submitted a plan to us with a significant buffer. The cost of that was prohibitive. And then they came back with a much reduced buffer, and I think it's gotta be somewhere in between. She was amenable to that. The parking spaces that we called out in the resolution, I also talked to her about. So I think there's probably always been parking in front of the building, but it's never been striped, and it's now facing the homes. And so, like, typical to Rivers Ledger, whatever, we would require that those headlights can't shine into those residential homes, especially if her, I mean, I think she discussed hours of operation more with the zoning board probably than you guys, but I think a couple times she said, like, 6:30 in the morning. So that's pretty early, and at least for me. And she was even amenable to swapping those parking spaces so that they faced the Mohawk Hudson Bike Trail.
Yeah, face the other direction. Yeah, I obviously encourage anything we can do to minimize the cost to the applicant, especially with the hours of operation being mostly during the daytime. Of course, during the winter, it gets dark early, and it may impact the neighbors, but we just need to have a balance of that. So if they can rotate the parking spots to minimize the amount of privacy fence or shrubbery to be able to satisfy that requirement, you know, I'd be all for that, so.
We had discussed a berm in front, was that ever brought up again, or was that the expensive option?
I didn't see a berm on there.
No, it wasn't on there, it was just a consideration.
Yeah.
In the landscaping, yeah.
I didn't discuss that specifically with her. I do feel like sort of headlights going onto the bike path at 6:30 in the morning is not a particularly big deal, if they were to switch them.
If anything, it might discourage inappropriate activities.
Yeah, it's probably okay for the headlights.
Like biking at 6:30 in the morning.
But, I mean, some people like to back into the spot, so if you flip them, and then they're still backing in, it's probably really important if they're gonna be parking anywhere kind of between the building and the, that you do a pretty thick screen for the residents.
Well, the resolution indicates.
Yeah, that's in there multiple times, yep.
If it doesn't serve the purpose, it's gotta be redone.
I went through the conditions with her, and she just said, "I understand what you're saying about the parking spaces, and I might be able to move them."
Right, if we can move them, that would be a good solution. Probably cost-effective for the applicant also. All right? The only other comment I have, and I'm okay with the resolution, but I just wanna make a point. We had a discussion a couple meetings ago regarding, I was gonna throw out a percentage of how much of the interior storage could be modified. I think the application said, like, 15, I calculate 17, I was corrected, I believe, by the town attorney, that incidental was on the order of 10%, is what I was told. But in reality, the 320 square foot is much greater than the 10% of what's in there. Now, again, I supported the area variances, so I'm okay with it. But I just wanted to make a point that we need to be careful on what's incidental, if 10% is a true rule of thumb, all right? This is very clear, it's 320 square feet total, including the 36-square-foot bathroom, all right? And I just suggest that if it ever changes hands, you know, this property, okay? I'll be right with you, hang on, if he ever changes hands, that we may make sure we pull up this resolution, it's important. And we have to keep it at 320 square feet or less, all right?
Laura, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, my God.
We got you.
I've been pounding this phone.
So, a question.
Sorry about that.
No problem, welcome, I'm glad you're online. The question was, did you have an opportunity to read the conditions? Did you have any concerns or anything you want to discuss before we take action on this?
No, I did read what you had said, and I had talked to Laura, as Laura was saying to you. As far as the headlights and stuff go, I was going to talk to them, because I'm not sure how many bushes it would take. We were looking at between junipers and boxwoods, so it would stay something green, so that even in the winter, nothing would fall off, and there would still be a coverage for headlights or taillights. And then we were looking at, where's my list here? I threw all the papers when I couldn't get the phone to unmute. And then we were looking at, let's see, the catment, the ferns, the butterfly bushes, the bee balm, all of the natural, the spyreas going down the side of the building. And then she said I didn't have to get the big ones to put towards the bike path. So then we were looking at the Norway spruces and the white spruces, and the can of ferns that the deer wouldn't eat, so they would stay green and go up over the bike path.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you heard, I said I was encouraging the planning department to, you know, try to work with you to minimize.
Yes.
Bare minimum that meets the desires, but it's reasonable. And yet, there was a mention that you might rotate some of the parking spots to point the headlights elsewhere, and that would help maybe minimize the expense of trying to build a buffer in some regards. So something else to consider, okay? Anything else from Ms. Conus?
No, I'm good.
Now, did you close on the building yet?
No, waiting for the date now.
Okay, good for you, we'll get there, we'll also get there. Any other comments from the board? No?
Yeah, Chairman, I did notice the 10%, actually, when it was originally written into the resolution, and when I realized it wasn't 10%, it went with the square footage that was sort of talked about at the zoning board. Although I think the zoning board's understanding was that 320 was 10%. But I don't think that they ever actually put 10% anywhere, so I stuck with the 320.
Yeah, I understand, I just wanted to make the point for future that we, you know, if it's 10% is considered incidental, 10% or less, we need to hold that standard. Because that's what I thought, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's like, yeah, the building is 2291, 2300 square feet, that would actually make it 230 square feet, that'd be 10%, so. So 320, you get some extra space there, okay? Any other comments?
None.
All right, Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Ms. Strang.
Aye.
Mr. Drescher. Chairman Walsh.
Aye, and that was an aye for Mr. Drescher, in case the microphone was not, okay? All right, motion carries, resolution's approved. Congratulations, and thank you for your hard work on this site to try to improve it. We appreciate that.
No, I appreciate all your help.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, and let's see, that takes care of that one. Next up, we have a resolution for site plan approval for a seasonal public outdoor picnic table area on the property at 2209 Knott Street, and that's the Broken Inn. I'm gonna summarize again. Resolve that this planning board and zoning commission does hereby grant final site plan approval for a seasonal public outdoor picnic table area on the property of 2209 Knott Street, which requires a reconfiguration of parking on the right-of-way subject to the following conditions. One, a building permit is required for the addition of the public outdoor seating. Two, the public seating table shall be affixed to the pavement in a manner approved by the building inspector. Three, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall participate in an onsite meeting with the town of Niskuna and shall address any concerns raised by the town. For this resolution, maintenance of the public outdoor seating, by this resolution, maintenance of the public outdoor seating is a sole responsibility of the applicant. Five, by this resolution, the existing temporary white and yellow water-filled traffic barriers are proposed to be covered, converted into permanent traffic barriers covered with planter boxes as shown in the applicant's site renderings, which harmonize with the surrounding neighborhood and complement the Town Center overlay district. Maintenance of the traffic barrier planter boxes is sole responsibility of the applicant. Six, by this resolution, the parking lot reconfiguration and striping shall be undertaken by the town of Niskuna in conjunction with, in agreement with Schenectady County for their portions on the Knott Street right-of-way. And seven, per Resolution 2021-2, condition number six, because the proposed business hours are complementary to many of the existing uses as identified in the planning board's parking analysis, any increases to the hours outlined below would require further planning board review and approval. So the hours are Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday, 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Fridays from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Saturdays from 9:00 to 11:00, and Sundays from 9:00 to 10:00. No changes to the business hours outlined above are proposed by the applicant. Mr. Dorpino, do I have a motion?
Still move.
Motion is for approval of the resolution, can I have a second?
A second.
And we have the applicant present, thank you, Mr. Nicky, and we're pushing on these conditions, I believe.
Correct. To the conditions, I do respectfully request that we modify or eliminate two of them. I'd like some clarification on the third one. My first concern is that, condition two, the public seating tables shall be affixed to the pavement in a manner approved by the building inspector. First and foremost, this was not anything that's ever come up in any meeting that we've had so far. We've had discussion now for the better part of 11 months. This was an 11th-hour addition that we were given, but that does not benefit anyone in terms of safety. So whether it's our ability to move those tables in an emergent condition, or whether it's just a matter of us being able to move those tables in terms of our ability to power wash and clean, or someone who bumps into a table, a table having some give, this is not something that we see any upside to. In addition, it's listed in the notes for this evening. It says the planning department has reached out to Fire District 1 for their thoughts on this, and recommends the least restrictive method for anchoring. I would contend that the least restrictive method for anchoring is not anchoring. The only thing I would say to that is if there's concerns about these tables easily being moved, we will have umbrellas. Those umbrellas are weighted down by the base of the umbrella, and that in and of itself provide some extra, it's called support, for people not moving those tables. The last thing I'll submit is that at some point in this process, which I've mentioned in email, you're gonna have to trust us to do things the right way. So if a table is moved, we'll immediately move it back, or at the end of that evening, move it back. But our intention now, after meeting after meeting 300-some-odd days here, is not to dupe the town of Niskuna by placing picnic tables and then moving them onto your property. So I would ask you to strike that from this resolution.
How about you go through the rest of the conditions, concerns, then we'll address them all at once.
Number two, the next thing that I would ask we strike is condition.
Number six.
Condition six, by this resolution, the parking lot reconfiguration and striping shall be undertaken by the town of Niskuna in conjunction with an agreement with Schenectady County for their portions of the Knott Street right-of-way, R O W. First and foremost, the safety, at this point in time, as Mr. Lang stated when he came up here during privilege of the floor, this parking lot is less safe on strike than it is striped. Number one, he's been doing it for 25 years. He's been asked to do it, I believe, by the town. A portion of it lay on his property. It maximizes parking. We had another gentleman here for privilege of the floor talk about people parking on the street, and Crescent Road, and things of that sort. This helps to alleviate that. I've submitted a letter, which hopefully was distributed, signed, and requesting that we, that this board allow the Broken Inn, myself, to strike this now, and not to delay. This is unanimous, this is the Niskuna Co-op, this is Niskuna Wine and Liquors, this is Mustachios, this is Niskuna Office Shipping Store, this is John's Hairstyles, this is Marie's Alteration, this is Lang's Pharmacy, and this is the Broken. This is every single tenant in this plaza asking the planning board in writing, and dated today, and addressed to you today, to allow us to put paint on the sidewalk. And as you remember from previous, no, I'm sorry, on the street. And as you remember from previous meetings, the only reason we were told not to strike was out of concern for our expense of doing so. The last thing I'll say to that is in our original special use permit, one of the stipulations was that we were to strike this parking lot. I can't understand for the life of me, and I'm hoping that it stops tonight, why the goal line is being moved, where we're told to strike, and then we're told to get a plan and a design from NJ Engineering, which we pay for, and that when that comes back, we have discussion after discussion with you. And then here we are again at the 11th hour, told not to strike, which again goes to safety, to maximizing parking. So I'd ask that you strike that from this. And then the only other thing I'd ask for is clarification in terms of when the building permit is to be issued. Because at this point in time, we're talking about putting picnic tables on concrete outside. We'll be at April 1st by this Saturday. And it seems as if the issuance of a building permit at this point in time is at the discretion of the planning and building department. And I'd like to get some clarification as to when that'll be issued and what's needed to issue that, because we've spent enough time on this, and if they wanna drag their feet, they can do so.
Okay, that's condition number three, I believe you're referring to the concern about having a, like, a pre-construction meeting in order to get the building permit.
Correct, and I would say, in terms of what needs to be accomplished at that meeting, we've already presented the layout, we've got community support, we've got landlord support. We need code, we're paying for it ourselves. I would tell you, it's listed here in the notes from the March 28 meeting that the building inspector, quote, "The building inspector took a cursory review of the drawing." I think if anyone knows what the definition of cursory means, you'll understand that that's almost akin to not looking at all, that's hasty. If they wanna come and do that, ample time has been supplied to do so. But at this point in time, we'd ask that a building permit be issued tomorrow.
All right, well, you have to apply for it, and it has to go through the process, the building permit process, but so.
I'd like to clarify, what exactly is needed in that process to issue a building?
Well, I mean, you have to fill out the paperwork, right? And it goes, and it gets approved by the building inspector, right? And then you get issued.
Anything that would prevent the building permit from being issued?
Well, it gets in a queue, so I don't, you're asking to jump the line.
To put picnic tables on the street after we've gone through this for a long time?
You know, it's a process that encompasses a lot of different permit applications, so.
Yeah, I mean, with the permit.
It's not under our purview.
And, and everybody else needs a building permit too, so we'll work on that. I think the concern when I spoke to you was regarding condition three about having a meeting in order to get the building permit. And I, I thought that condition number three is pretty much a, it's a standard condition. So my question, my question is, does it need to be, do we need to have the standard condition that we would have for a much more complicated project when we're just, you know, not just, but looking for a building permit for the picnic tables and for the, you know, the stuff that we've been working on?
I actually took out most of the standard conditions because it is such a simple project. I did leave this one because I recommend doing it, especially because the town does need to do the striping. Just, I mean, Elena can chime in here, but the, but if the town has decided that they want to stripe their own right-of-way, I, the planning board doesn't have the authority to change that.
Yeah, I was talking about the meeting, you know, if we have to have a meeting.
Right, I know, but I'm just saying that I think it's important, like, you guys do the review, you get the planning process done, it goes to building permit, but I think it's really useful to have the highway superintendent and the engineer there to meet with you so that you can be like, here's where I'm placing the barriers, here's where the striping's going, and just so everyone's all on the same page as the work is being completed. It's a standard condition, but I also think it's really important that, you know, like, the, the bigger players that are involved in this, like, joint effort are all meeting before anybody actually, like, not puts a shovel in the ground in this particular instance, but starts spending money on the, you know, the planters and the picnic tables and things like that. I think it's really important that everybody is standing out there together and agreeing on timelines and paintings and things like
I have always made myself available immediately. I would like to hopefully have this meeting as soon as possible. I know we've had challenges with communication, so I'd like to make sure that we do this quickly. I would also ask if, as you just mentioned, and you referenced Elena, if the town has required Mr. Lang to stripe its parking lot for the last 25 years himself, and he's done this himself for the last 25 years, and a portion of this is on his property, why is he not able to stripe his own parking lot at this point in time?
Because as previously discussed in several other meetings, the town is looking at that intersection as a whole and what we're looking to do as far as pocket park potentially and everything. So prior to any finality being done, instead of putting you on the hook for it, the town has said, we will do that in conjunction with the entire project for that particular intersection.
Okay, do we have a timeline? Because I spoke to Jamie LaHuff from Metroplex today, and he said the discussions, quote, "are in very early stages," and that they don't anticipate anything happening anytime sooner.
I have not been privy to that, so I can't answer that.
Is that the reference to a long-term project or to this project?
To anything going on at that point, at that
I hope, I hope that's not the case, because we're really just talking about, you know, the striping and working with the county.
To be clear, we're talking about temporary striping on this project. The town will do the temporary striping as soon as it's available, for, as soon as the weather is good enough for them to do the temporary striping. But the longer-term project, I think, is still in the early stages.
Laura or Elena, I would, would, would the town have any objection to a modification of condition number six to just add language that states, at the sole discretion of the town, the applicant may stripe?
I believe everyone's asking for that.
Well, I'm asking if the town attorney and Laura, if you're okay with the town being able to delegate that responsibility as it sees fit.
That's interesting.
I mean, I leave that up to Elena, but I have been working, I've been meeting with the highway department, I've had communications with the Schenectady County. I know Mr. Nicky generously agreed to remove the curbing, but that's not something the county is like, has to enter an agreement with the town. We have to show what the finished product's gonna be after the curbing is removed. There's a lot that goes into, I mean, the county is willing to draft an agreement for us to change the parking and put it in there, but it's not, it's not something that I think the town can delegate. I mean, because there's agreements and things that have to go into it, and we know that the lines are gonna change. I don't think that the position of the town is, I wouldn't recommend putting it in there because I've been working really hard on it. I think that the highway department is ready to meet with Mr. Nicky. I think Ray, even this morning, said, I mean, the weather's gotta get better, but his, you know, he understands to get his crew out there when he can. But even like trying to decide when to do the striping and when to remove the curb, like, it, I just
You said that they would, they would do temporary striping until, and then when the curb is removed, it'll be restripped. Is that what I heard?
Well, my understanding of what's happening right now is that, and I tried, you know, I'll let Mr. Nicky can put, per this resolution, if it passes, could apply for a building permit as long as all the codes are met with the separation of the tables and everything. Permit could be issued, meet with the town, figure out where the planters are going and where the parking spaces are going, and we'd stripe them temporarily, and the town will work with the county on removing the curb. And then in the future, we may change quite a bit that's happening around the Crescent, Clinton Park, Alleyway intersection.
I understand, Laura, but unfortunately, condition three says prior to issuance of the building permit, you would have that meeting. You just said after the issuance of a building permit.
Yeah, I mean, I would do it, like Mr. Nicky said, as soon as possible. Our standard conditions usually say prior to issuance of the
Okay, so, you know, I just, and Laura knows, I've talked to Laura about this last week, so bottom line is, you know, I know there's a sense of urgency. Town will do its best to get this meeting right away, get your building permit once this resolution goes somewhere, right, tonight? And, and that's, like I said, I can understand that the, the point of the town from the striping, they want to stripe it. Okay, if there's concerns about working with the county and any agreements, the town's gotta do that. So all I, all I can ask, and then Laura knows this, is that try to move it along as quickly as possible, right?
So I don't have, and no disrespect, but I have a lot of faith in that. I would ask the question, why is it that since we first applied in October of 2020, that this lot has not been striped?
Well, things have changed, and there was discussions, as the town attorney said, so that
Even when it was paved, it wasn't striped. Why is, why is it now gonna be striped?
I mean, partly that's because it's been in flux for such a long time. Your applications have changed. The town has reviewed every application that you've submitted, provided comments to you on them, but some of the applications that were submitted were not approvable. I think at, sometimes the town had said, we know we're gonna do changes. I don't think we should stripe. I feel like we did have some good indication that striping is beneficial to the neighbors and it's beneficial for safety. So I went back and we're like, okay, we'll stripe this as long as everybody understands that it's temporary. But the thing I think that does put a kink in it, which you brought up, is that if you reconfigure those four parking spaces, you do have to remove that curb. I, I'm not even sure you can actually necessarily stripe those last two without removing that curb, because the curb
Well, as Mr. Diarpino suggested in an earlier meeting, to utilize and stripe the rest of the area and just not utilize two parking spaces there and use the existing barricade is something that at least temporarily, I think we can all agree, temporarily striping is better than not striping at all.
Yeah, I think we are all agreeing to that.
Allows us to get there. So what I'm asking is, may I temporarily stripe, and when the town decides that they're ready to configure or make changes as they want to, or stripe as they want to, to undo what I've done, or I'll pay to undo by painting over those lines in black to stripe those? So we have something tomorrow so that we have 12 or 14 parking spaces instead of seven or eight with people walking through there.
I have had repeated meetings with town supervisor and the highway superintendent. They are committed to striping this as soon as the weather allows. But it is their intention to stripe it. The town, is the town's intention to stripe these parking spaces.
Okay, so it sounds like unless somebody makes a motion to change condition three or six, it's gonna be the resolution that stands for those two conditions right now, all right?
Well, we didn't really discuss condition number two and
That's where it's going next.
Yeah, oh, okay. Well, I make a motion to modify condition number six or strike it. If it's, as it's already, if it's true, as it's already been stated that this board does not have the authority to tell the town of Niskuna whether or not to reconfigure and stripe, then I don't see how we can condition the approval of the site plan on that. Personally, from what I've heard thus far, I do share some of the concerns raised about the safety of patrons to this business and the other businesses in the plaza, and I think it's notable that all the businesses have come together to voice that same concern. So I think we have to take any step possible to make this a little more expedient, if only just to leave the door open to the applicant's striping it. If the town decides that they're okay with the applicant's striping it after every, every, every other approval's been granted. I'm, I'm simply saying you would, you would save this business the few days between the meeting, which occurs with highway, and the, the day on which the highway department is available to bring their striping equipment to the site and stripe.
I don't know that I'm necessarily following you, because although my understanding is, all the condition is doing is stating that the town will be undertaking the striping, not that it impacts the timeline of anything as far as Mr. Nicky's approvals.
And I, and I would also add on to that, I do think it needs to be in the striping
Point of order, I've just made a motion, so I would just ask that we can
But I need to clarify the motion. You said two different things. So I can get behind that the town can either stripe it or delegate the striping. I'm okay with that. Most likely, they will not delegate it, let's be honest, right? And they're gonna stripe it, but I'm, I'm willing to that. To take the condition out, I think it's basically trying to clarify, you know, in the past, with the special use permit and everything, we said to stripe it. So what this does is changes that and says, do not stripe it. So I'm okay with, you know, adding that the town can delegate the striping, but I have a concern that we need to set direction, and it's changed since the issuance of a special use permit.
Very well. So I'll just make a motion then that condition number six be amended to add language stating that at the sole discretion of the town of Niskuna, the applicant may complete any of the parking lot reconfiguration or striping.
And I'll second that.
Okay, and then, so
Could I extrapolate? All right. So we have a plan here that shows a configuration. Now, discarding the county's four spaces, which is probably gonna affect two parking spaces here, which we know is gonna be a little bit of a continuous dialogue. They make painting products that they use for utility markings that are not permanent. If Mr. Nicky was allowed to stripe with that type of stuff, it's easily scrubbed and removable. You don't have to blacktop over it. It wears off over time. But if there is a hiatus between when the building permit is approved and when this gets executed, at least if the configuration had to be slightly modified or shifted, that could be erased, and then the final striping with the agreed distances that the town could execute could be, could be done very, very easily.
It sounds as though Laura, currently if I'm wrong, has said that she's already raised the, the prospect of temporary striping before building permit to the supervisor, and the supervisor is intent on the town doing it.
Correct.
But that, but that, you know, that's not lost communication, what you just said. So, you know, the town could delegate to do the temporary striping with the product that you, that you're talking about also. So I think the, the motion, and my second on that, on that condition, would still allow what you're suggesting to occur if the town so desires.
Yeah, and I just, I'm just to follow up on that point. I do think that you have to address the park, the, the actual striping, because although it's in the town right-of-way, it is a piece of this, it is a piece of this proposal.
So
And that might be part of why the town's insisting they do the striping.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so any other discussion? We got a motion in a second to modify that condition to include that, you know, that the town, at the town's discretion, they can allow the applicant to go forward and temporarily stripe. And, and David gave a good suggestion on how that could be accomplished without low cost and easily to change. So that's, that's the motion in a second. So we can take action on condition number six. Let's just do it, but to show hands, unless there's any other discussion on that. Are those in favor of modifying condition number six as stated by Mr. McPartland? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
We have five, two, with two opposed. Thank you, everybody. All right, so we're gonna leave condition number three and number six slightly modified. Thank you, Mr. McPartland. And then I want to talk about condition number two, possibly Mr. Diarpino. You want to go ahead, Dave, or you want me to? I'd be glad to.
No, I can, I can take this. I agree with the applicant. I don't see any benefit to affixing the tables to the ground, especially if they're going to be moved. I believe the applicant's also talked about possibly chaining them together at night, just as a precaution, to keep them from wandering. And, I mean, there's ways to do it, but I think you're gonna be compromising the asphalt that's there. You have to drive a stake in. There has to be some type of rod or slip or lock that goes in that. And, you know, I just don't see what the benefit is. If the tables do creep on to the town's property, I think it's incumbent on the applicant to keep it tidy outside exterior place, and he'll probably know what the parameters are once he sets the tables up, and we're gonna put them back daily.
What's the wind rating on the tables?
On the what? Tables?
Yeah, it's a standard, standard catalog item. The purpose of fixing it was not because of the wind rating. The purpose for fixing it was to make sure it stays within the proper
I'm thinking it might have been both.
Um, no, I'm getting a no. It wasn't
Okay. I have a concern about them moving with wind, because I've seen metal tables go flying, even large ones.
That concern would exist all throughout town, so I don't have that concern. All right, all right, so Mr. Diarpino, so you making a motion?
I have a motion to just remove
Strike? Number two.
Item two.
Okay, anybody second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. McPartland. I'd like to continue the discussion. A couple of facts that I think are important. Because I, you know, I've talked to Laura about this, and I appreciate what she's trying to do, but I also agree that we don't need to affix them, especially, you know, with umbrella stands. We all know if we have picnic tables with umbrellas and stands, they're not easy to slide, right? So that's gonna help restrict them to their location. The other thing I think that's very important here is that we're gonna have the barriers that are gonna be converted to planters. That's gonna delineate the space, not gonna be able to move a picnic table beyond that. So when you have your site meeting, I mean, we've have a, we're gonna have a barrier basically put in place that's gonna prevent the picnic table from leaving the property. That's the way I look at it. And actually, you know, and I think if you, again, the agenda statement, Laura, you mentioned that most seating areas of planning board's approved have been contained with fencing or curbing. So my view is this is consistent with that, because the barrier acts as fencing or containment, whatever word you want to use. So for those reasons, I support the removal of that condition. For those reasons. So any other comments?
I would support the chairman's position about the, the umbrellas. That could serve as some sort of way to keep the picnic tables in place, and, and the plans here state that there are gonna be umbrellas. So I think that kind of de facto does it, without having to, Mr. Diarpino says, make permanent, you know, modifications to actually stake those things in, so I think it gets it done.
Yeah, actually, thank you. You just reminded me, one note I had is actually, so you start drilling to in the pavement, you probably should, you know, have a location to see what underground utilities may be there. So I think that's a lot more engineering, so it's, seems reasonable, but it's, it's, you know, there's a lot of details, even drilling a hole and putting a rod in. So for those reasons, I agree with the, the motion. Any other discussion before we vote on the motion to strike condition number, number two, was it? Number two. Public tables shall be fixed. Any other discussion?
The umbrellas will be moved at night, right? Or when it's windy or if there's expected weather, they get, the umbrellas get removed, but the stand stays still.
Yeah, whatever is gonna be the safest method based on
Yeah, I mean, you can close the umbrella and strap it too, and keep it from the wind from hitting it. I mean, that's what I do at home personally.
Just because it is a residential neighborhood.
Yeah. We're not gonna put any
Yeah.
It's gonna blow off, we're not gonna
So, and just so you guys understand where I'm coming from, my concern is that the planning board is creating conditions that cause enforcement burdens on the building department. I think that when the outdoor seating is fenced in and there's kind of a clear delineation of where it needs to be, there's not a lot of things that can happen. My concern without anchoring the tables in some way is that from day to day, we're a complaint-driven office. If, if you guys approve a plan with buildings in this configuration, it can be the neighbor across the road, it can be a planning board member, it can be anyone who can call our office and say, the buildings are out of, well, you know, they're not in the alignment that they I have to send a building inspector out, they have to verify the condition, and then we have to have a discussion with the property owner. I don't think that in any way, shape, or form, he wouldn't move the tables back, and he wouldn't diligently try and move the tables back. But my concern is, with a condition like this, where the tables can migrate, is that it will be a burden to my office, complaint-based, if they're constantly being shifted around. I, you know, not even, I don't expect the Broken Inn will be shifting them around. Human beings are chaotic. And I really would recommend that you guys think strongly about conditions that create enforcement.
My point is, I think, I think the, the order barriers with the planters is gonna solve the issue of them, because there's not much real estate there. They're not gonna be able to go far. We talked, and I mean, at the end of the day, or during the day, your, your staff will be responsible, yourself will be responsible for making sure that you, you know, abide by the, the approval of the site plan. I mean, that's, that's all there is to it, so
This is the safer option.
Okay, but we have a motion in a second. Yeah, okay. But we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of striking condition number two regarding affixing the picnic tables, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Alright, so five to two vote that it's, condition number two is removed. Alright, any other discussion on the resolution? We have a modified resolution with condition number two removed and condition number six modified, allowing the town to delegate responsibility of temporary striping to the applicant if they so desire.
I've got two questions. One, I didn't see where there would be any garbage receptacle. And I think if you're going to have outdoor seating, it's needed.
Do you have that in your narrative?
We currently have trash cans outside.
But they're not shown on there.
Correct.
My point is they should be.
Okay. You're welcome to come take a site visit.
I've been riding by.
How about we put that on the list for the site meeting that you're talking about? That makes sure that they're in appropriate location, it doesn't impact pedestrian safety or ability to get to the picnic tables.
Hey, maybe I missed it, because I've read the resolution a couple of times, but I do not see where it prohibits the server service, which was the intent.
Well, the resolution may not say it, but I know we've had significant discussion, and we have the synopsis, I used to call it, that the applicant submitted, and we had a concern at the privilege of the floor. I don't know if that gentleman's still here or not, but there's no drinks to be put outside. There's no table service, no waitstaff that's going to be waiting on these tables. That's been in our discussion, and it's in what the applicant has submitted, you know, and it's a community table. So if somebody buys a sandwich in the co-op and they want to sit there and eat their sandwich, my understanding is, that's okay. And.
I think it should be in the conditions.
Condition, what would the condition state? No table service, no alcohol outside. I think that's already given.
And also.
I think it needs to be in the document. But it's part of the record as well, so.
That's right, yeah. I mean, they're not going to be waiting on tables. We've had this discussion.
No, we're just.
And if, and if somebody walks out with a drink, well.
I'm liable anyway.
Yeah, you're a big guy. You're going to take care of them, right?
Nobody gets out of our door for the.
Alright, alright.
I think it should be in.
You want to make a motion to modify the resolution? Tell us what you like.
There shall be no table service and no alcoholic beverages outside.
Okay, do we have a second on that? Second? Hearing no second? Looks like you can't get a second to move forward with that. I think it's already covered in agreement and with the paperwork that's submitted.
And I will note that I think it's too many tables or too large, but I think we're really setting up an attractive nuisance, and therefore I will be voting against this.
Thank you.
So just one thing for me, the neighbor gentleman who came and talked about having some nuisance complaints on this. So was he right? Did you, like, open the door on hot night and?
We had a Buffalo Bills game where air conditioning was not working, and so we opened the door. They won, and people were cheering, and apparently he could hear it across the street.
So Laura, has there been any complaints to?
I do actually think we received a complaint about the door propping, the door propping noise at the time. We've received, to my knowledge, at least one complaint on the noise, possibly two.
I'm willing to bet it was the same gentleman, and I can tell you when it was, because our duct was split, broke.
Yeah, it broke for, how long was it propping for?
It was like eight days we were.
Yeah, I remember that. Okay.
It's fixed now.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, well, please take that into consideration, you know, what you heard tonight.
Of course.
Any other comments?
I just had one clarification, I think I said this at the last meeting, but I didn't put it in writing, is the bike racks, the, we're, the Metroplex is actually installing bike racks, I think, to the forward. And so I don't think that these bike racks need to be on the plan. I don't know that you need a formal amendment. But they may interfere with queuing on the ice cream line anyway, and we will be having bike racks all throughout the front of the.
I would love to see that drawing. I just don't have, and you one today when I spoke to Metroplex, they said, they're in the very early stages and don't have any, I don't know, I'm getting conflicting information.
So there's two projects, right? Metroplex is doing street furniture for the front within the county right of way that's related to the grant that just occurred.
Which is not within the footprint we're discussing.
Correct. And that, I think, is pretty close to being done, and they would be, they'll be installing that shortly.
Including bicycle rack.
Including bicycle rack. And what's very preliminary is trying to reconstruct that intersection. Yeah.
So don't find any bike racks?
People are going to want bicycle rack in sight if they're going to be running a bike.
Do we, do we have a timeframe on one bicycle rack installation that's going to happen?
That's out of provision.
Because I want to tell my patrons.
Uh, on the front, I think, like, this, this spring and summer, they're talking about street furniture. That is separate from what they're doing on the crossing. Yeah.
If we put a bicycle rack that's out there, that's not impeding our traffic temporarily, so that people can park their bicycles in the spring and not lay them on the sidewalk when they're coming to get ice cream, as it was proposed in our drawing, is that a problem?
I mean, I think, I don't see a problem. I mean, it can be discussed again at this meeting that we got to have to kick things off.
And clearly, it's a theme that you're hearing from, and I'm sorry if this becomes challenging, is if we can now, albeit temporarily, and cater to people now, and their safety now, why push this down the line for some time in the spring or summer? We're at the spring.
Again, we might have the opportunity with the meeting to do something temporary there.
That's a good idea. So I put down at the meeting, we'll review the location of the trash receptacles and the bike racks.
Alright.
Okay.
So the only other question I have, and I'm sorry, one, could you just read back to me what the modification is here for the striping?
The modification was, paraphrase, is that the town can, has the opportunity to delegate the striping to the applicant.
Okay, so along those lines, who is the town?
The town is.
Is it the planner?
It's not, it, well, it's, the town is all those. It's the planner, it's the highway department, it's the engineering. And Laura has the lead on integrating.
Laura would delegate.
Yeah. Yes, Laura would work with, yes, Laura would work them. Is that correct, Laura?
Okay. Is there any answer you're going to delegate us to strike?
So it's not my choice. It's, I'm not the superintendent of the highways, I'm a communicator.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't think it'll change. Go ahead, Alia.
No, I was just going to clarify that it's not Laura's decision.
Yeah, but she would, she would coordinate the meetings and work with the other department heads.
Has she been having discussions with them already? So I'm just trying to get.
She has been, but I think the question was, who is the town? And I just wanted to clarify that Laura is not making the decision solely. It's.
Sure, what she'll paraphrase is, who is the decision maker, as opposed to who is the town?
It's the collective department heads who are involved.
Is there any point at which if this doesn't get done, we can strike? Well, we set a date that says if the town collective is unable to strike by X date, that it will be delegated to us, as opposed to at the discretion of?
The striping issue is something that came up with the special use permit. So I, I mean, in theory, I guess the town could reconsider the special use permit as it relates to that, but I don't think that that's what you're looking for, so I would just let it play its course.
It's part of our original special use permit, we don't have to strike. Mr. Langton, if you took his time to come here tonight as well, so what I'm saying is, as was asked in the letter from.
But what I'm saying is, it could go back before the town board, and the town board could say, it's our determination that we don't want you to stripe it, and then that's it, conversation's over. So I.
Then we end up in the same situation while we're waiting on the town to strike it, right?
Yeah, I think, I think we understand your concern, and I think that the town hears you, and they're going to do their best to move this along, you know, based on the weather. I have confidence we'll get there.
Glad you do.
I do. Alright, so we have, we have modified resolution, striking, fixing the tables, and modifying the town, striping town being able to delegate to at least temporarily strike, stripe or permanently strike, whatever their choosing is. And we've already had discussion. Are we ready for a vote? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Henry, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Laflon?
Aye.
Excuse me, on the modified resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Khan? Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Mr. Diarpino?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Nay.
Ms. Strang?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye. Motion carries. Modified resolution is approved. I vote a five to two. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for working through that. I do appreciate it. I know it's not, but I appreciate it. Alright, alright, so.
Mr. Chairman, on the next resolution, I need to recuse myself.
Thank you.
Because I currently work with the applicant's counsel.
Thank you, Ms. Strang, and for this one, Mr. Drescher will be taking your seat, which is the seat of Mr. Scrubert Tennesse. So this is resolution 2023-13, a resolution to make a recommendation to town board on a special use permit to combine 1725 and 33 Fagan Ave properties with the existing Kia automobile at 3900 State Street. This includes the removal of two single-family homes and the extension of the automotive sales lot onto South Fagan Avenue. Alright, bear with me, I'm kind of starting to lose it. I don't know why. Alright, further resolved, this planning board and zoning commission hereby recommends that the town board grant a special use permit to combine 1725 and 33 Fagan Ave properties with the existing Kia automobile lot at 3900 State Street, remove two single-family homes, and extend the automobile sales lot onto South Fagan Ave. As shown in the three-page drawing set stamped, received March 20, 2023, Planning Office, Niskiuna, New York. Subject to final site plan approval by the planning board. The findings for this recommendation by the planning board are attached in this resolution, and that's something we're going to work through once we get a motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Mr. McPartland, do I have a second? I'll second the resolution for adoption, the motion for the resolution for adoption. Okay, we have to have some discussion. I think the key thing, well, there's two key things here. Obviously, everybody's opinion, whether we move forward or not, your vote. Right now, the resolution is written for that the town board grant the special use permit. So that's the way it's written, and we are going to attach our reasons supporting that, that's required by the town zoning ordinance, basically our report to the town board. There was a late draft that came out for the special use permit application. I don't know, you know, obviously, hopefully people had a chance to read it. I know it's difficult with people working and everything. Mr. McPartland did have an opportunity, and his comments were incorporated as the project lead. So thank you for doing that, Mr. McPartland. So anyway, that's it. So I guess we should probably go down line by line, Laura, and review this, and see if anybody wants to add or make any other statements. You want me to do that, Laura, or you want to take notes, or how would you like to handle that?
Yeah, because I, I apologize for how late it came out. I, we, question by question at the Conservation Advisory Council, it does work out. I will take notes, and then I can create a draft. So if you want, I can just read you each one. I printed it out, so I can write and take notes. And then based on that, we can, we can attach the.
You want to read?
Draft findings, yeah, so.
Does everybody have it in front of them? If you don't, you know, you can pull it up on your computer. I have a, I print it, because I like to print things, so. I like to kill trees, sorry.
So the, and I, and just to be clear, this is actually taken from the same report we did on the Holocaust memorial. So same questions, and then I had special use permit questions.
And I'll let you know ahead of time, I got, I had some, I was putting together bullets myself, and I tried to bin where my bullets may be appropriate to add to this, and I'll try to do that as you, as we move through it, okay?
Okay, and I didn't fill out the first one, because it sort of follows to the end. But the first point that we made a recommendation on is the full conformance of the site plan with regulations of Articles Five and Six and all other provisions of this chapter, which is the 220-44 Site Plan Review.
Okay, I will tell you, and again, the other board members can speak up, but I did review those sections today, Article Five and Article Six, in with reviewing those articles that were in conformance, subject to the final site plan approval. Because there's, I know, we heard, you know, things we still got to work through, right? Once the town board, if they do issue the special use permit, we're not done with this project, it's going to come back to us. So my view is it's in conformance, and it's subject to final site plan approval. And I also would like to state that it's a unique application. There's lots of bins, average density development, PDD, PUD, all these things are listed in those different sections. And this is kind of a unique thing, so it's not specifically talked about. So, but in general, looking at, because it's not mentioned, and looking at the other articles, it appears to me to be in conformance. And we have the applicant online, by the way, right, Mr. Silvani?
Yes, I'm here.
Alright, thank you for bearing with us tonight.
You guys have unbelievable patience.
Thank you. Alright, so anybody else have any other comments on it? Do you agree with what I'm saying there? Everybody okay with that? Okay.
So the second question is the adequacy and arrangement of vehicular traffic access and circulation, including intersections, road widths, channelization structures, and traffic controls. Consideration will also be given to the project's impact on the overall circulation system as it relates to adjacent use. And Patrick and I just put a note that the overall circulation was reviewed, and the curb cuts on South Fagan Ave have been reduced to one. I didn't know if we wanted to continue and add anything there.
I just looked at my notes. I think it captured, I mean, it was being reduced to one, and it's one curb cut. We might want to also include that because of the location of the curb cut, and you might have this later on, it minimizes traffic going out to State Street, because the reconditioning lot is able to access the Kia automotive lot without going out there. So, and so that speaks to, you know, safety also, you know, minimizes curb cuts, speaks to safety. Any other comments from board?
Number three is the adequacy and arrangement of pedestrian traffic access and circulation, including but not solely limited to separation of pedestrians from vehicle traffic, walkway structures, control of intersections with vehicular traffic, and overall pedestrian convenience. I think one of the wins that we had looking at this project is the sidewalk proposed out front of the applicant property, which extends the intersection of the sidewalk on State Street. The sidewalk's also separated, I think, from the street by street trees.
Yep.
And is an overall improvement to the corridor.
I had no additional comments on that one.
Likewise.
Okay.
Number four, the location arrangement and setting of off-street parking and loading areas. The, these ones are kind of, I don't know that they necessarily fully apply, so essentially, I just, and Patrick and I just proposed that it's code compliant, and that the vehicle delivery would improve overall site safety.
Yep, the only comment I had, Laura, was site safety, because it goes beyond the site, because this prevents tractor trailers from unloading on State Street, because now they have a place to unload, and the applicant is going to make sure that they understand where the unloading area is when they transmit upon final approval, if they get final approval, this drawing, to say, here's where you unload. So they just wanted to change site safety to, you know, safety on the site and within the Route Five corridor.
I wouldn't put money on that happening.
Well, we got to try.
I've watched too many of the haulers unload their vehicles on Central Avenue and State Streets. Regardless of the availability of other arrangements.
But they will have the availability, at least here, where they may not have at other locations, alright? That's, that's the only, number four, that's the only thing I had, Laura. Anything else, anybody? Okay.
That was good.
Alright, number five?
The location arrangement, size, and design of buildings, lightings, and signs. I think we've been talking a lot about lighting, but the lighting and the signage would need to be provided to the planning board for final site plan approval. But it's the board's understanding that lighting will be minimal and security-based, and we're not expecting any additional signage on South Fagan Ave.
And I, I agree with that, Laura. The only thing is that the lighting, based on the evidence middle, it's not, it's security and safety. I just think we need to add those words somewhere in there. It says, security-based, it's also safety-based, okay? And that's what the applicant was saying about, you know, the low-level lighting for, you know, what they're unloading at night or walking the site. So it's a safety thing, okay? That's all I had.
Six, the adequacy type and arrangement of tree shrubs and other landscaping constituting a visual and a noise and/or a noise-detering buffer between these and adjoining properties. This is, I think, been an important discussion item. Recommend that the planning board can continue to work with the tree council and the applicant to increase the buffering, especially for the homes on South Fagan Ave.
The only thing there, I don't know if it's applicable to this one, Laura, is I mentioned that we had additional green spaces that we added to the other properties to improve the corridor appearance. Like the, the applicant shows that they're going to put some greenery at the reconditioning center, possibly both sides. So additional green spaces added on other properties or other properties as part of this application to improve the corridor appearance.
But it's still a net loss of green space.
But this, this additional is to other properties, not to the site. It's to, you know.
But overall, it's still a net loss.
It is, it is a net loss, but the, I mean, the question more goes to what, what type of a noise and visual buffer is being established to
Protect the neighborhood.
To protect. So, you know, I would say personally, it seems as though they've provided ample buffering. We often defer to tree council's judgment on what's the most appropriate type of buffer, and so I like that we have kind of, you know, deferred some judgment to them as well.
Yeah, I think another important point, I just look in here, it may, may apply here or somewhere else, is that I think the original submitted was 144 parking spaces, and the current plan is down to 90 parking spaces in order to provide all the things that we requested, such as the green space and the truck capability for offloading and all, and all those things. And if it includes somewhere in there, just that it was 144, and it's down to 90 now, in order to improve the appearance and functionality of the site. And number seven is regarding multifamily complexes. That's not applicable. And number eight?
The adequacy for provisions for the disposal of stormwater, sanitary waste, water supply, fire protection, oh, water supply for general fire protection and general consumption, solid waste disposal, and snow removal storage areas. We did have them delineate the snow removal areas on the plans. They are delineated. There's no significant change to sanitary water, water, sanitary sewer, that should read, water supply, fire protection, or solid waste disposal, but the stormwater will need to be examined more closely during final site plan review.
Yep, I had no comments.
Laura, did we want to make any comment here as to what type of review would be performed? I don't know that we've discussed yet whether or not a TDE would perform that review or outside or inside engineering.
We would need a TDE for this one. It's, it's a significant amount of disturbance, and they're proposing stormwater management areas. So we pretty much always have to get a TDE for that.
Yep. That's stated.
I guess it is stated in the next, the next point there.
Yeah, the next one is kind of similar. The adequacy of structures, roadways, and landscaping in areas with moderate to high susceptibility to flooding and ponding and/or erosion. We do have poor soils in Niskuna. I don't think the site is any different, but we made a note that the engineering department and TDE will have to review the stormwater management plan, and the issue should be examined more closely in final site plan review. Those are similar to the notes that we had on the stormwater management for other site plans.
Yeah, I do have one comment. And the only comment I have is, I'm concerned with the use of the word issue, because issue is, you know, negative, that there's a concern. And when you look at the sections in the zoning code, it talks about whether, they talk, instead of saying issue, it says consideration or subject or the matter. It doesn't say issue. So I would suggest that we strike the word issue and replace it with, you know, considerate, yeah, either consideration or matter is appropriate, or this subject should be examined more closely. It's not necessarily an issue.
Okay. Number 10 is protection of adjacent properties against noise, glare, unsightliness, and/or other objectionable areas. I think we said this before, but we're requiring a strong visual barrier to homes on South Amherst Ave and South Fagan Ave to protect the residential nature of the neighborhood and to protect the adjacent property values. So do you want to change this to this subject should be examined more closely?
Yeah, exactly. Anywhere there's issues, you know, again, if you look at the code, those sections, it doesn't say issue. It says considerations or subject or whatever.
Yeah, should be examined more closely in final site plan.
Agreed. It needs to be examined. It may not be an issue. Okay.
Number 11 is retention of existing trees for protection and control of soil erosion, drainage, and natural beauty. The applicant did identify the large Norway spruce to remain, as well as several trees along the backyard lot line with South Amherst Ave neighbors. The tree council can work with the applicant to identify any more tree, if any more trees can be retained in the new planting plan. So this subject should be examined more closely in site plan review.
Thank you.
Can we go back to 10 for a minute? I don't think we ever asked if they were planning on having a PA system that would cover the property. I would hope they would not, but we could ask. He's on. We can ask him that.
Ms. Gold, that's accurate. We actually choose to not use a PA system as much as possible. We, we text with all of our employees.
But you do have one?
There's an existing one that Fusillo had that was on the building. Certainly, we're not going to expand what's there, and we, and we use it pretty minimally.
Yeah. So we could put a note, not, not going to expand PA system. That was for 10.
You could do that.
That'd be helpful. There was a huge issue with the dealership across the street.
Okay.
The Mohawk comments were read on, and it kind of got knocked out. Because a lot of their need got knocked out.
And then 12 is not applicable. It has to do with multifamily again. So, Mr. Khan brought up that we also should be making our recommendations to the Town Board on a special use permit. I broke out the special use permit criteria that we look at to make recommendations to the Town Board. This would be very similar to what we would do for the Mohawk, the Mohawk one as well. So this is all in one paragraph, but he broke it out to each kind of thing that's in parentheses. The general character, general character of the proposed goal is complementary to the existing parking and disharmonious to the existing residential homes on South Fagan Ave and South Amherst Ave. That was just, I think, my sentence that I popped in there. I'm happy to.
It states reality.
You okay with that, Mr. McPartland?
Yeah, you know, I just, my general comment about the general character is, you know, in re-reading the comprehensive plan statements about this neighborhood and town, there's a lot of reference to balancing the residential and commercial. So I think this statement fairly puts forth the, those, how those needs are balanced and how the impact is, has, has a balanced, there's a balanced impact, we'll say.
And in reading the
Yeah, at least pull it forward to.
Sorry. I keep hitting it with my elbow, so I'm trying to keep a little distance. In looking at page 77 of the, which talks about the State Street corridor, there shows a deference towards, towards residential. I mean, the second paragraph of the State Street corridor says, "Development of this area is a concern, as other sections of State Street outside the town's limits have undergone substantial large-scale development. The town should continually seek out sound development opportunities that will enhance the corridor but not significantly transform the current character." Even, even at the very end of that, it says, you know, it talks about not overwhelming adjacent residential neighborhoods with development.
Mr. Drescher, I'm glad you raised this area of the comp plan. When I first read the excerpt that was provided by the planning office outlining the goals, which I think we can all get behind, to not have commercial development overwhelm and consume residential, that definitely rang true to me. However, when I read this whole excerpt in its full context, I find that that full sentence, which begins with "development and maintenance of the sidewalks, curb cuts, and roadways by the state have made the corridor attractive and allowed the street to maintain its low-density development," clearly shows that this statement about avoiding the overwhelming and consuming nature of commercial development is a statement of how development has occurred over the course of many decades and many iterations of our comp plan. And this, this commercial tenant, this commercial occupant has, has been here for all of those. So I think, I think it's important to recognize that this commercial use has been in existence for quite some time, and certainly, when this latest iteration of the comp plan was written, you couldn't deny that any statement made about current conditions would be addressing the auto dealership that is now Matthews Auto.
Yeah, but again, looking at that last sentence, I mean, it does, I agree. It says "development, maintenance of the sidewalks, curb cuts, and roadways by the state have made the corridor attractive." But when it says "development," it doesn't necessarily mean active development. It also could mean passive, where the lack of development choices have made it appealing and not overwhelmed. So again, I think when you read this, there is a consideration and even a hint of concern of not allowing commercial to overwhelm and overstep its bounds. And I think taking down two houses, that's, that goes against page 77.
Fair enough. And then you're entitled to that, that interpretation and those feelings. My, my takeaway from, again, a few excerpts of the comp plan, I noted on page four, the comp plan specifically states that the document itself is a roadmap that sets out broad goals and objectives, and that should preserve valued community characteristics while allowing for the enhancement of smart and sustainable growth. It's accomplished by maintaining an appropriate balance between residential and commercial needs. Page 77, also in the same paragraph as, as the statement you are pointing out, says that the town should seek out sound development opportunities that enhance the corridor but not significantly transform the current character. And so therein lies our responsibility to ensure that there isn't a significant transformation, that it's in keeping with the general character. And so, you know, before, before we get too far down the road here, I just want to point out to the group that there's one item that we will get to in due time regarding the general fitness of the structure or use to its proposed location, where I think we'll have, be able to have even more substantive conversation about this. There's another area of the comp plan, page 86, that states, and I, and I quote, "A continual theme that has been advocated in other areas of the plan is to maintain a balance of commercial and residential development."
And as one of the authors of the last two comprehensive plans, I will tell you that Mr. Drescher's interpretation is exactly what I had intended. We were concerned about these areas. And at the time, I didn't even realize that the commercial, highway commercial zoning extended that far from State Street. But I never, ever would have wanted that to be interpreted as an endorsement for tearing down two homes that are, by Niskuna terms, more affordable, even if they do need some work, that are close to a bus line, clearly walkable to the bus line, ideal for some folk who don't have many opportunities in Niskuna to find a home that works for them.
And I don't, I don't think it's an endorsement by no means, you know. I think it's a balance, as Mr. McPartland said. And so it's up us to, you know, make the recommendation that we feel that it's reasonable.
Telling you, I don't feel it is a balance. I think it's giving away current homes for commercial development, period.
If I can just point out, page 86, if you look at the bottom, it does say proactive measures can be utilized by the town if it felt it was in the best interest for the future. So if we are feeling that, you know, this sets a bad precedent of tearing down homes, especially affordable homes, we can be proactive. So, you know, I do want to note that I do appreciate the applicant's concessions they've made and all of the suggestion, you know, they've taken all of our suggestions, and if it wasn't for the houses being torn down, I likely would be, depending on the table, in favor. But I can't get myself past that, especially looking at the comprehensive plan. And I've been looking at it a lot since our last meeting with regards to this, this, this plan.
And added to that are the ongoing discussions about how there's a statewide shortage of housing, particularly affordable housing. Niskuna doesn't have a lot of affordable housing, and we're taking some away. I can't get beyond that either.
No, as you know, once we work through this, it'll come to a vote, so.
But rather than make a long statement at the end, I figure as we go through, I'll just point out my concerns.
No, thank you. And as Mr. McPartland just stated, next one just talks about the buffered areas, and then the general fitness of the structure or use to its proposed location. And this is the one where we're getting into the comprehensive plan. The planning board finds this proposal helps sustain small-scale commercial business on the State Street corridor. It also feels a 2013 comprehensive plan is neutral on future development in the Stanford Heights neighborhoods. And it's specific to the Stanford Heights. So that's kind of where the, you know, whether you believe it's meant for State Street, or if you, you know, it doesn't specifically say, you know, that, you know, this application is unique, and it doesn't, either way, support it, no pro or con. I think that's the bottom line. So it's up to us to, you know, to make the recommendation.
And I remember how this board fought for the neighbors of commercial property across the street to protect their neighborhood.
Which one's that?
RJ Murray.
All right.
We put limits on their operations. We made them put in some good screening, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, it works for, you know, that stuff, again, the applicant submitted the, at least a preliminary site plan, which, you know, addresses a lot of those concerns with the green space, leaving the tree, all the things we just talked about. So I, you know, I think we could leave that one personally. As stated, again, if you disagree, well, we'll come to a vote. Remember, we're, this is a positive recommendation to the Town Board. Street capacity, okay, automobile, automobile parking and storage, that's what it is, and it's compliant with the code, or provisions in the code to allow what's happening here. Street capacity and use, no capacity issues, current offloading of vehicles problematic. And so this, so this would be onsite offloading, sidewalks a benefit. Sorry, Laura, I'm just trying to move this along, okay? Public health and convenience, the planning board finds as an important component of this proposal to ensure there is no light pollution for the parking lot onto the adjacent residential homes. And that's what we're, you know, we're minimizing, and the applicant is minimizing their lights willing to go lower. So all that's true. Preservation of general character of the neighborhood. On one hand, development is disharmonious to the residential character of parts of South Fagan Ave. At the same time, the area of South Fagan Ave near its intersection with State Street is, it has for a long time been of commercial character.
Going back to public health and convenience, you didn't address the noise issue there we did before, I know, or the issue of exhaust, et cetera.
Well, these cars are going to be parked, you know.
Well, cars have a way of getting moved.
Yeah, but, I mean, every car gets moved. I mean.
Some of them get moved a lot. I spent a lot of time on car lots over the years.
Yeah. And then therefore be it that the current site plan mitigates some of the impact, some of the impact, I'll note, to the neighborhood character through landscape buffering and designated location for vehicle offloading onsite, and this proposal is made possible by the mutual agreement of the existing residential owners of 1725 and 33 South Fagan Ave who desire to sell their homes to Matthews Auto. Additional findings, if there's anything else we can add it. The only other thing, Laura, I thought, just looking at my notes again, we did, we did, the applicant has agreed basically to combine the parcels to minimize the risk that this could become independent business on South Fagan.
They have to.
They have to. I just wanted to make, you know, note of that, but it is already shown on the drawing. There's a note on the drawing that states that, so I don't think we need to add it, but I just want the record to reflect that their willingness to do that.
Yeah, we changed the way that we actually described the project, even in the special use permit, so that it states that the lots are to be combined. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that was clear in the discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And any reference we make now says it's a special use permit to combine 1725 and 33 Fagan Aves with the existing Kia automobile.
Okay, thank you. And Laura, obviously, whatever happens here, if it goes forward, we'll, you know, I'd be glad to look them over again just to make sure, and then Mr. McPartland, I'm sure, would help out to make sure we got it captured before we send it onto the Town Board.
Yeah. And I appreciate you guys taking a look at it so quickly. I did have a note on the preservation of general character of the neighborhood, which I know I've discussed with you guys before, that currently there's two residents that are directly adjacent to commercial property, and this proposal would make six or eight. I had it in there, and I removed it. I think it actually is eight, and it was an increase of six. So I did, I do think that's important to note. I know Patrick wanted to remove it, you know. I think it's okay to have conflicting points in a recommendation of the Town Board in order to clarify if you're ever going to have a different recommendation, that there were points of contest in here that may have been, you know, balanced out. But I do think it's important to note that currently, there's only two homes abutting a commercial property. And in this proposal, you're increasing the number of commercial homes that are directly abutting commercial property.
No, Laura, I agree with you that we should include it. I think we need to be factual in the findings.
There's no problem. And besides that, the Town Board obviously has the opportunity to either approve or deny or approve with conditions, and they can address that if they so desire. Okay. All right. So I think that's it for working through the recommendation to Town Board. Laura will update the draft version, and, and if we Laura will update, uh, the draft version and, um, and if we vote to send it on, you know, and we'll, uh, make sure we review it for accuracy before we get forward it to the town board. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We worked through the things. Is there any other discussion? If not, um, I'm going to call for a roll. Any other discussion?
I guess I'll bring up a discussion. I was out last week and I did see some of the video, but, um, does anyone on the board have a recollection of a very clear re, redesign or an, an end zone redesign of the reconditioning lot to optimize the parking and flow on that portion of the commercial-facing side of the land that they own? Does anyone have any recollection of that?
So we, we gave them some feedback, we, as we, we have, um, continued to do. The latest revision that we received does reflect the improvements that we suggested. So there's an addition of a landscaped island at the corner of State Street and South Fagan Avenue on the reconditioning site now, as well as a landscape buffer which Laura recommended between the reconditioning site and the existing home. Just next door on South Fagan, on the same side of the street. Um, and then there is a, they've also provided a plan that shows all the parking lots striped so that we can have an accurate count of the number of, um, spots.
Is that, is that, is that look?
What you're looking at there is more of a rendering that shows the landscape buffer, but separately, there's a different plan that counts out the spaces. And, um, so what's, what's been provided is, is what was requested at the last meeting.
So, I think, thank you for explaining that. Was there an increase in efficiency in the parking? Do you recall?
There's, there's an improvement in buffering, certainly.
Yeah, I can see that.
You know, we're, we're, we're losing some impervious surface in, in so improvement and, and so making those improvements. You know, I think my, from what I've gathered from the applicant, the lanes of traffic through this site are wider by design because they're, this is a more active site where they're moving a lot of cars through new and used inventory. So I don't know that there's much more opportunity for, um, removal of impervious surface.
Yeah, and I, I think, again, we'll have another opportunity to give it another swag, um, if the town board passes it back to us, this isn't final. But I, I think I recall the applicant stating that, uh, the nature of the business of the reconditioning center is, is different from the storage area or from the lot itself. Cars are coming and going quickly and backed up, you know, to prep them for sale, because that's, they also prep the cars there, is my understanding, not only, uh, used, but, uh, new cars, you know, take off the, uh, shipping and, you know, clean them and get them ready for the, uh, new owner. So I think if you have some more concerns about whether that site's being unutilized, we can, we have another opportunity to, to talk about that.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I jump in on that?
Sure, sir.
Yeah, so Mr. Laflamme, you're, you're absolutely right. We did have that conversation and it did, um, develop into a further conversation where I think the board was looking at that property as a parking lot and something that we could use better for parking. And absolutely, if that was the case, there's a way to design that to, um, to accomplish, uh, some, some additional parking spaces. But that is in and of itself a very different business. And with the movement of cars over there constantly, uh, if you were to take a snapshot of the overview of it during a day, you know, with it, with a, you know, a minute-by-minute camera, you'd see the ins and the outs. So, um, I, I respect the fact that looking at this overhead shot from Google Maps makes it look like it's very underutilized, and it has been underutilized historically before we purchased it. But I, but I'll tell you, um, there are parts of the day where if you were to go over there at a certain time of the day, maybe after a truck has just dropped, and we've loaded that lot up with all the cars to be prepped, you would see that it's very well utilized. It's just, um, you know, it's, it's fluid, as Mr., the, the chairman said, and, and I, and I explained it to Mr. McPartland as well, is that, uh, the, the use of that lot changes hour by hour throughout a day. So you, your analysis of it is very accurate from a static standpoint, looking at it, saying, what could we do better? But the dynamic use of that property makes it, um, not as easy to lay out like you would an inventory storage lot.
I, I appreciate the explanation. It, this, I'm really challenged by this decision. I, um, I, I'm more in, I'm more aligned with, you know, Mr. Drescher's interpretation and Mrs. Gold's interpretation of the comprehensive, uh, plan. The, the only reason why I might approve of this is because I would like to see what the town board's perspective is on this. So we do have a chance to re, reconvene on this project if it were to be approved by the, the town board. But I, I want to say that the amount of concessions that you, as the applicant, have made in response to our comments is significant. You know, the spruce tree, finding a way to keep it, um, the, the, the buffering, uh, the solving of the, of the safety issues. I'd feel I'd be irresponsible in some regard not approving because of all the benefits and concessions you've already made. However, I can see the one house being torn down is already surrounded by commercial. I don't, I don't, I don't think taking a second one down is consistent with a comprehensive plan, even in this unique commercial residential area. So I was really hoping to see a more optimization of the commercial-facing side of the property, which I think you did a good job explaining the fact that I'm thinking of it as a static fixed parking lot versus its use. That's a very good point that I needed you to explain to me. And I was hoping that you could keep that second residence, and I know you've already taken a hit on parking spaces, which is a great. You're listening, you're collaborating, you're making a concession, so I, I don't, I don't want to penalize anyone for that, but I was just hoping there was a way to maybe keep that second residence, so those are my.
And at the last meeting, Mr. Laflamme, at the last meeting, and I don't recall if you were there or not, but we did have that discussion. And, um, there was extensive amount of work with the engineers to try to figure out a way and not even looking at it from saving parking spaces and reconfiguring. It was, it was, if we saved it with, with what was left, um, what was gained was, uh, was a, was a home in disrepair that we, we, we would become a landlord, and, and we're not in the business of being a landlord. So what we, you know, although we considered it and tried to figure it out, we kept coming back to the point where the business that we're in is, is automotive and we need automotives. And if we could save that house and make this project pencil with saving the house, we tried. But at some point, it just becomes impossible to do both.
Appreciate the response.
Any other discussion from the board?
There's one minor thing, and I was struggling where to fit it into the list, and I couldn't come up with it, but it has to do with the current nature in the absence of this parking lot. There is, how many miles is it from the Morris Avenue lot? Mr., um?
Two.
A mile, a half or two miles.
So, so there is this whole concept of extra cars in the road, extra emissions happening repeatedly. Right? If this parking lot were not to be there, they would have to continue as business as usual. Right? I mean, I didn't think it was a big enough factor to, you know?
I see what you're saying.
I couldn't find where to put it in there, but.
So you could, so are you concerned about the, the environmental impact of, of the cars?
So, so there's a net environment benefit for having the cars brought to the lot, parked on the lot, and being transported between Morris Road and here.
Right.
Not that that will go away, but.
Well, yeah, my only concern with that is that, um, you know, soil is a great observer, absorber of greenhouse gas emissions, and you're adding impervious without knowing if you're truly having a delta, net save of greenhouse gas emission.
Agreed.
I think the argument could be made that potentially making more greenhouse gas emissions.
Agreed, that's why I, I mean, I'm, but it's the, kind of the last straw here, right, so.
All right, you could also make the argument, though, is that, uh, my understanding is that, that they leased that space, and at any time, they could also lose it. So to Mr. McPartland's comment and the comp plan about striking a balance, this gives a balance, uh, to help, uh, a business, a longstanding business within town, and that's why I'm going to support it.
Look, at the end of the day, we, in our recommendation to the planning, to the town board, we are making, we're defining what that balance means here, right, for us, right?
Yep, no, they'll have their own public hearing and, and make their decision based on our information plus, uh, the guidance provided in the zoning ordinance.
And it goes to the town board regardless of our recommendation.
Right.
Um, yep, the only other thing that I want to note was the planning board department put in a note in the, in sort of the end of the findings where you can add additional things, I think, uh, for the Holocaust Memorial. We had talked about sort of a maintenance plan for the future and even a potential, like, what to do if it, you know, went under and demolished, and Clark and my planning intern had been talking, I, it would not, is whether or not we would want to ask as a condition of the special use permit, that if the use was discontinued, it would be up to the applicant to remove the asphalt, um, to see if in the future, um, the land could be returned to green space or residential homes.
So Laura, I had a question on that. Being that we are combining parcels, how do we, how do we actually, as a matter of course, call that out without entangling asphalt that's been there for thirty years or so?
Yeah, I mean, I could defer to Elena. There's probably a way that you could, um, delineate what area that you're talking about.
Just attach a map to the.
Yeah, yeah.
My recollection of the, the condition that was granted on the Holocaust Memorial was that it was unique to the Holocaust Memorial and that the, it was actually born out of the applicant mentioning to us that prior to breaking ground, they wanted to ensure that they had all the funding secured in addition to a reserve set aside for the, um, the deconstruction and removal of that memorial should it ever cease to operate as such, because they would not want a abandoned Holocaust memorial existing in the town of Niskiuna.
Yeah, that's my recollection.
So that, that, the, I, I, I hesitate to sort of extend the precedent, if any, set with that special use permit recommendation to this.
And, and the other thing too is that seems like there's quite the business need here. Uh, so the only way that I think that this would occur, that it wouldn't be functional supporting thirty-nine hundred State Street, is if the dealership were to build and go elsewhere and the lot were to come for sale. And then wouldn't, wouldn't we do a change of tenant if the, a new, somebody new came in there? Uh, I mean, they, they had to file the same guidelines of our approval for the functionality and the operation of this, this area, right? It doesn't change. So, I mean, the only thing that could happen is they would try to sell it, and then it would have to come to us for a subdivision, so it still would have to come through us.
Yeah, my, my concern is actually that it gets along the lines of what Chairman Walsh is saying, is that, you know, some years down the road, we, either the current dealership or some dealership or some other entity that they sell to wants to put a building there. Right? To conduct business out of a building, right, uh, you know?
But again, it would be, it would be folded into the existing parcel.
That's right.
It would be, so they would have to subdivide to do that, and it would have to come to us, and I know we're not in favor of having a, a kiosk there and another used car lot or something, so.
No, no, but it, and the case I'm talking about, let's say it's this, this existing dealer. Business dynamics change five years down the road. They want to basically add another building. We're going to do indoor car park, right? We're going to put a little Carvana kiosk there, right?
It would have to come to us, though, right?
Yeah, I mean, agreed, it'll have to come to us, but by then our hands are.
Yeah, it wouldn't need, it wouldn't need a special use permit.
Is that what we're discussing here? I thought we were discussing that if the, this purpose changes and the lot is excessive, that the lot would be removed before the grantor tran, transitioned it to another owner.
Yeah, that was the discussion. Um, I think you guys already know that the planning department lands on the side of that this is against the comprehensive plan and its encroachment onto the residential. And so one of the ways that we were thinking about possibly mitigating that would be, um, that if the use would change, that it couldn't, like, these lots couldn't go to another commercial use, like outright. They would have to demolish the parking lot and put it back to green space, and then you'd have to start.
For a change use.
For a change of use, yeah.
Yeah, for a change of use, but if it was another dealership. If it was not a dealership, we could be faced with an expanded.
Because special use permits, they're not specific to, to names, they're specific to use.
The only concern is we.
They're not open-ended.
They're not open-ended.
Next, I got as we, the discussion.
Even if the properties are annexed together, is that true?
No, I think it's permanent.
The special use permit would be, no, well, it's permanent with the use of the lot.
Correct, but this becomes a very attractive lot.
For commercial development.
For commercial development.
If it's not used for a year, the special use permit's gone, right?
Correct.
And there's something else you should be aware of, since we're discussing car trends. There's a fight going on in many states to allow manufacturer-direct-to-buyer sales, which would get rid of a lot of car dealerships. Some states are fighting it and some are buying right into it. So you can't say that there'd always be another car dealer to come in.
You can't, um, but I, one thing that I, has been mentioned several times in this process, and I just would like to reiterate. I think what's brought in this project so far to this point and what, what really underpins my support for this project is the fact that all of these parcels fall within the commercial highway district. And, and I, and I feel compelled at this time to remind the board of some of the permitted principal uses of which a applicant could come before this board in acquiring seventeen twenty-five or thirty-three Fagan and submit a proposal to establish a eating and drinking establishment, fast food, sit-down, takeout restaurants, hotel, inn, motel, general business offices, professional medical and non-medical offices, wholesale distribution facilities, commercial recreational facilities, including bowling alleys, billiard parlors, and health clubs, a bank, retail stores, a food market. These are permitted principal uses, don't need a special use permit. All you need a special use permit for in this area of town are automobile sales, animal hospital, vet clinic, kennel, and an indoor theater.
And you're saying that's true for all the lots on that block?
Yes, sir.
All the way back to Albany Street?
All commercial.
No, all of the parcels that are in question proposed is combined. As a matter of fact, thirty-three Fagan, the last parcel down Fag, down Fagan Ave is the end of the district. So this would bring basically all of the parcels on Fagan that are in the commercial highway district under one umbrella.
And, and again, I, the other thing too is that you could, you know, the town board has the opportunity, depending on how they act, to, to, we really didn't have a lot of discussion with the applicant regarding, you know, um, you know, having a, a bond or whatever to be able to turn this back to green space. So one way to handling it is, is not doing anything at this time. Town board will have an opportunity. If the town board grants a special use permit, you know, might, might be a condition of our site plan approval to add that. If we get there.
Or it could be a list of things for the town board to consider.
Well, we can list it to consider, sure. Are you okay with that, Mr. McCarlin?
Absolutely. I mean, in their ultimate authority, we've already seen how they can modify. Um, I think with the average density development that came before us for Kells Farm, the town board, um, decided to change site access. We, we had proposed a winter drive connection as a part of our, uh, sketch plan approval, and the town board said, you'll have to find a different access, so I accept that. I, 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 I feel that the recommendation we make, um, should be, um, you know, the best representation of our collective interpretation of the comp plan and, and how this fits into the, the larger, um, you know, town zoning, and so that's, that's where I come down on this.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, then we can at least add that, that there's an opportunity to, to look at, uh, return to green space if the site doesn't function as intended, or whatever words we want to use.
Under the additional findings.
But not necessarily.
Town board can consider.
Consider.
Can I ask, can I ask a question, Ron, those things? Could we also include rebuilding a single-family home?
I don't think so.
Yeah, that sounds.
Forget I asked. Now's the time.
All right, any other discussion? Any other concerns? Because I think we're ready to call a roll. Is Mr. Henry still with us? All right, thank you, Mr. Henry.
Mr. Laflamme?
Nay.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Mr. Darpeno.
Nay.
Oh my gosh.
Ms. Gold.
Nay.
Ms. Strang. Uh, Mr. Drescher.
Nay.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. So it looks like, uh, one, two, three, it looks like the, the resolution fails. Uh, on making a recommendation by a, a vote of four to three, four nays and three ayes. So what do we do from here?
Goes to the town board anyway.
Yeah, do we, do we do that?
Yes, it does have to go to the town board anyways, but it, since the resolution was for it to be a positive, um, recommendation, then obviously the opposite of that would be a negative. So it would just be a negative recommendation with the comments that have already.
Do we need to call the roll and say that's a negative and we call the roll for the record? Say denied?
I think by default it is.
Okay, just want to make sure. Okay.
Yeah, because.
That's the only other alternative there.
Yeah, it's the only other alternative. All right.
Well, um, so what, what about, I mean, so I'm just, as a matter of process, does the applicant understand that the board is now going to take a vote to recommend that the town board that grant or denies, sorry, denies the special use permit?
It's not gonna be.
I think we just decided we already voted, so it basically.
By default.
By default, it's gonna be reversed. So, you know, it's gonna say, it's gonna say, uh, deny and a's would, you know, that's why I said we could call the rolls and.
I mean, you can, but in theory, what's already been voted is that it is a negative since the motion was for a positive that failed. The only other alternative is negative.
Yep.
And they'll see how we voted. They'll see the numbers, right?
And the comment and the discussion is all going to be part of.
Yep.
Wait, only concern is the findings. Just give me one second.
I don't think the findings are changed.
Yeah, they shouldn't change, right? Because they were both inclusive of concerns and, or not concern, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, both positive and negative. So they were already.
Okay, but our, um, sorry to be a pain, but it says if the report of the planning board is unfavorable, it shall contain the reasons for the recommendation for disapproval. So I think it's okay to present the, the, um, failed resolution, but I think it would be important for the majority to at least, um, list out reasons, um, that I can include, uh, in the recommendations that I can include in the packet to the town.
Thank you, Laura. That's excellent. Cause that is in the code.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that. So, so I think you're suggesting that anybody to vote it nay statewide for the record.
And then I'll just add those reasons in.
Well, sort of did during the body for the most part.
Okay, but do you mind re-stemorizing for me?
Yeah, just basically.
I would, I'll, I'll start. The, the percentage of exposure to commercial increase is too great. And there's one too many houses being taken down. I also don't think they're optimizing the, um, reconditioning center, but that's, I'm not an expert in that. So I trust everyone else's opinion on that.
Okay.
Who's next? I can't remember. Yes, with you.
David.
Yeah, David.
Okay, so the, the intent of the State Street corridor and how it harmonizes with the residential was to be somewhat contiguous, not to start to encroach by taking down residential properties in order to, in order to achieve the development. Uh, the other thing, I know that it's part of the special use permit, but I, I still have big problems with a parking lot being a principal use, no matter what the zoning is. And I know that we've had other applicants here on the town for that. And I also agree with the, uh, the points that, uh, Mr. LaPlante made about, um, taking down the two homes primarily to put a parking.
The only comment I would have, it's not a principal use because it's going to be combined. It's an accessory use to the thirty-nine hundred State Street once they combine a lot. So it won't be a principal use. Just for clarification.
Okay. And my point, back really on what Mr. Drescher had said, quoting the comprehensive plan. The intent was to balance things and to not assert residential and commercial. And I pointed out that we've got a dearth of affordable housing. This takes two houses and a third lot that could be an affordable house. All with easy walking distance to the bus line. And takes them out of that and makes them commercial, makes them parking lot. And I know that the town has a dearth of affordable housing. And a dearth of housing on public transportation lines. Oh, you got that part up?
So I do want to just reiterate how I appreciate the concessions and all of the, um, acceptance of our recommendations and working with us by the applicant, but in making my decision, I had to look at Article ten, section two twenty dash sixty. And then on page seventy-seven of our comp plan, uh, the State Street corridor, primarily the second paragraph of the two. I just, the overarching purpose of that, that paragraph to me, and, and it just exudes a concern for an over encroachment of commercial onto the residential. While there is commercial and there's acknowledgement of that in the State Street corridor, um, there is, in my interpretation of, of the language there, um, a concern for preserving the residential a little bit more than the commercial. And I also looked to page eighty-six of our comprehensive plan that says protective measures can be utilized by the town if felt it was in the best interest for the future with affordable housing issues throughout the country, but also here in Niskiuna, um, I think being proactive for the future means preserving our affordable houses, especially again on, on the bus line. So I, that was the reasoning behind my decision.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Because it wasn't, um, mentioned before, because, because, um, I didn't mention it before. I'd like to just mention now that I did give some consideration personally to the desire expressed in the comp plan to preserve affordable housing and by my interpretation of what affordable housing is and how it's defined in the comp plan, I don't see how either of the two homes that are being proposed to be demolished would qualify. So I, I would encourage those members who find this as a, um, and a preservation of affordable housing to reread and perhaps refine that definition for future iterations of our comp plan. It talks specifically about multifamily houses as affordable. And, and I also just think it's important to note, if you had made a site visit, you would have seen that, um, neither home really appears to be in a, in a marketable state. So, um, you know, as a new buyer of the home, um, you know, I, I question its affordability. I think, I think it'd be quite expensive to be a homeowner on seventeen Fagan or thirty-three Fagan. Furthermore, thirty-three Fagan is owned by the same person who owns twenty-five and that's a, that's a lot of acreage to purchase.
He would probably.
I see it, I see it sitting vacant.
But I must take exception to your inference that I did not make a site visit. I didn't go with you on your site visit because I'd already been on my own. Plus I'm very familiar with the area. I've walked it in the past.
Okay. Any other comments?
Does the applicant?
That, well, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Salvani is online. I'm sure he's here. What we have to say, right, sir?
Yeah, no, I, I've, I've heard it. Um, obviously very disappointed and, and knowing that we had the proper zoning and overcoming almost every one of your concerns and, and making all of this concessions one-sided from our side, uh, continually to make concessions. I just, I, I'm shocked that we're at this point. Um, and, and I know my executive team will be as well. Um, you know, the, the additional time and investment we made in making this everything that we thought would help you, uh, see that this site could be something else, as Mr. McPartland pointed out, and we know that as well. I mean, you could have a warehouse there, you could have a storage warehouse there, um, without a special use permit. So we, we started with a request to put in a parking lot and we ended up providing a park is how I look at it. And, and then to be at a point where, um, you know, the, the, we're, we're trying to protect or, or we're trying to balance. I just feel like that, that there isn't balance. There's, there's a lot of effort on our part to create balance and, and I just, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm honestly shocked that, that it went down this way.
Right. It still goes to the town board. You can still make your case to them.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, Ms. Gold, but it does help. Uh, I've been, I've been down this road many times. It does help when we go through all of this with the planning board to put this effort in so that we can get on the same page before it goes to the town. And that's what we're trying to do here.
No, and I, and I appreciate personally, you know where I stand, so there's no secret and I appreciate your hard work.
And I understood the concerns along the way. I really did, but, but every one of our meetings, we seem to get one step closer and, and understanding our position and us understanding your position, we pivoted. Uh, in every case where we could, and this comes down to, um, just, you know, one or two items that, that we could not overcome and should not had to overcome based on the fact that we are zoned for what we're asking to do.
Chairman, I think it's time to go to them.
Yeah, okay. I understand. Well, no, I appreciate your comments and that you know where I stand. I mean, I, where I voted. And again, my, my position is we need to also help businesses as much as we need to protect the, the residents. Uh, I know it's a balance, as Mr. McPartland's saying, I fully agree. And, uh, maybe the town board, uh, will see it, uh, the way the, the minority on this board has. So, uh, good luck with the town board and, uh, and.
Thank you.
And, uh, if you come back to us, we'll do what we can to make this a, a great project as, as all the hard work that you've put into it. And we appreciate your hard work.
I appreciate your recognition of that. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Okay. We got some discussion items. I'm going to move on quickly because I know it's late night and everybody's like ready to pass out. So, uh, the first discussion item is on Ontario Park, Ms. Gold, if you don't mind. But the bottom line, I asked for this to be on there because Ontario Park, we, we called for the public hearing. Uh, let's face it, you know, it, it didn't happen when it was, was expected to happen. And because of our meeting schedule, it's three weeks out for the public hearing. So all I want to do is ask for a tentative resolution. If we come through, um, any open engineering items or if we can condition them, if the town, uh, planning department can draft a resolution, can we have a tentative resolution for the Pulsonnoy subdivision?
Yeah, I'd like to ask for that.
All right. And if we can do that, if something comes up during the public hearing that surprises us, we can always pull it. All right? Does everybody okay with that?
Yep.
No concerns? All right. Thank you. On seventeen fifty-seven Union Street, Bank of America, we have a site app plan application for a new signage. Took a look at the application. It's basically replacing signage, a little bit different color. Uh, there's no waivers, uh, that I recall. There's no waivers. It strictly, uh, requires a review. Town planning department has, uh, suggested that we approve it. In fact, I think one sign goes away and the other signs are basically functional signs that, you know, about the height for the drive-through. So I don't have any concerns with the application. So I'd also like to call for a tentative resolution approving the sign package.
Everything's in compliance.
Yeah, everything's in compliance.
The applicant is on.
And we, we have the applicant there. Now, if there's anything you'd like to add to that, uh, sir, who we have online for the.
This is Tom with AJ Signs. Uh, yeah, you, you got it. It's pretty simple.
Yep. And we appreciate you hanging out with us tonight and we'll call for a tentative resolution approving the changes. I mean, I don't, you know, the color, eh, you know, for me, but again, it's, uh, it's a corporate identification. So if that's your corporate colors, you know, we, we're usually pretty lenient on that.
Yeah.
Cause it's your colors.
It is more red than what's there right now.
Right.
Uh huh.
Okay. So please, everybody take a look at that and we'll have a tentative resolution for that. Any other concerns on that? We okay? Okay. So next is eighteen fifty-one Union Street, twelve forty-five Roughness Road. Thank you to the applicant. I don't know how, can't thank you enough for hanging out with us. It was quite the meeting tonight and we appreciate it. And for the public for sticking around, if I assume that everybody, people are staying for Roughness Road.
Very impressive.
Um, we have, you know, dual project leads on this, uh, Mr. Diopino, Mr. Khan, you know, we heard from the public tonight. I, I don't want to diminish what the public has say. Uh, I mean, I, I didn't really catch anything new personally, uh, but there, there were some good, some good points and I appreciate the comments from the public.
Yeah.
Uh, but yes, so let's leave it at that.
I just wanted to cover the logistics. So we do have a TD, right, Laura?
Um, yeah, we selected Weston and Sampson because we, we have actually used them on the Mohawk Golf Club before. So I don't think there's a conflict of interest.
There, I was going to say for the record, Laura, no conflict.
Yes, I thought.
Yep.
So and for the record, that means that the Mohawk Golf Club has no affiliation with Weston and Sampson. They don't use them for anything. What Weston and Sampson is entirely R T E that reviews for them.
Nor do I as a consultant.
Nor do you as a consultant, yeah.
And I think, you know, you know, Ms. Cor, you gotta, I mean, it was there obviously in the code, you know, I've quoted it several times, but you were able to see with the previous applicant or two applicants ago, that we are going to go through a findings list. And, um, you know, I definitely see the comments from the, the comments from the neighbors will serve to define, in addition to the comp plan and the zoning code, the character of the neighborhood. But we need to go through all the other items in terms of, you know, the technical items that the TD is going to be looking at. Water, the sewer, the forest main, right? All of that.
Yeah, we do understand that, Mr. Khan. And as I mentioned before, because of the amount of time we've been spending on the project, we have advanced the, our engineering drawings to a point where we're ready to sit down with the TD and we can start to deal with a lot of the misconceptions and, and maybe perceptions of what's available relative to utilities and site drainage. And, you know, we're, we're certainly not shedding water now onto other properties. We don't intend to shed water in the future to other properties. We think we've got roots. Well, we know that water's not an issue. We believe we have a sewer root that will not increase capacity at all, as it might have been if we were trying to go to the same line that Kells Farms is on. And we're fully aware of the situation with D E C and what the implications of that would be. So obviously we've got to deal with, with the comp plan and the balance of character. Um, and it's going to be an interesting question and discussion. How do we quantify what one person's definition of character is versus another? Because from my perspective, I'm building something slightly different, but complementary to the existing neighborhood. Is that in keeping with character versus someone who wants to see a nineteen sixty-two colonial bill in two thousand twenty-three that you couldn't even do under the current state energy code? So those are going to be the balances that.
Right. And I, I, I do think that we, we have a lot of factors on character that we'll be able to look at, right? We've gotten the community's inputs on that. And look, two applications ago, right? You can see that at the end of the day, the board, you know, there, we're all independent members of the board. And when it comes to, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I hope you picked up. We, we did go back and, and maintained the fifty-foot buffer.
We saw that.
That we committed to.
Yeah.
And, um, counselor, um, I did confirm with Mr. Rutherford that if the town was interested in any type of a right of first refusal, that he would consider that.
Yep. And, and Laura, there was one point about the length to the cul-de-sac. I think right now this exceeds that five hundred foot. So what, what are our options there?
It, it does, but it's, I believe the code reads should.
Should, right.
Not shall.
That shall, right? Yes. I mean, that, that clearly came across. That's why I said, what are our options? Because the language of the code was not, was not imperative.
And just for a point of information, Mr. Khan, the, I believe the state building code allows up to seven hundred and fifty feet for a cul-de-sac with no emergency or alternative access point. And our sixty, well, not sixty, our easement would provide that emergency.
Yeah, you'd have to measure it off easement. Yeah.
Yeah.
The easement to route on the old design or the?
On the old design would be the emergency. So that would give us an alternative egress point in the future.
So what used to be?
I was, I don't know if the board was. I was a little concerned about the connectivity discussions and, uh, you know, it's certainly something that we're willing to do, but I heard from some of the presenters that they weren't so interested in that connectivity. And I guess I would defer, you know, at some point when we get to that level of conversation, I thought it was kind of nice that we were trying to connect connectivity, but I didn't hear that loud and clear tonight. So.
What connectivity you refer to?
The walking path.
The walking path. Yeah. Well, I think folks were worried about getting hit by golf balls.
Yeah, well.
Tell you, we had neighbors opposing sidewalks on Windsor.
Uh, right.
And now that they're in, they're there a lot.
Yeah.
They're well-used.
Well, we are, we are more than happy to do it. And also knowing Mr. Wood for quite a while, I was a little bit surprised by his concerns because I don't know that he became a civil engineer, but, um, the trying that Mr. Kimmers put together certainly allows for sixty feet. Um, and we never did expand the eleventh green, just for the record. Um, we replaced a lot of sod in the back of the green and recreated the shape of the green, but we didn't expand it. Because I've made that statement before that we haven't made any significant changes to the golf course. So.
The, the one thing I do want to bring up for the board and Laura, you know, the gentleman, Mr. Spain, who's still here, right? So his property is going to become, you know, surrounded by roads and all but one side.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, yep.
Well, so where is that exactly?
It's northern, the northern. Twelve nineteen.
Although the road is going from the south, yeah, that one.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, the right of way, the right of way is not going to be touching his his room.
Yeah, I so legally, it would still just be a corner lot. Because the west side of that property is not directly adjacent to the right of way, but you know, on the ground, it's going to feel like that property has roads going around three sides of it.
We do actually have at least one house in Niskuna that does have roads on three sides.
Yes, as far as I know, there's nothing prohibiting that.
It's, the house has been there a long time.
It's not
Built in the fifties.
It's not prohibited.
Yeah.
I do think that it's impactful, but not.
Yeah. Laura, one other question I had is, what was the plan for the paper street? Why? Why was it there to be?
Um, so I had an internal engineering meeting today, and that question did come up. So I will go back to the original subdivision and see what, if I can find. I I don't know, because we have good files on some subdivisions and not good. But I will go and see if I can dig up the history of of how that came to be for you guys.
I can offer information that I've heard over the years, being a member at the club now for forty-two years this year, that when Mr. DeSantis put together Rosendale or Hawthorne Hills and did all of his layouts, which occurred in the fifties, sixties, we had already obviously been there since twenty-two. He had had conversations and was hoping at some point in time in the future, he might be able to buy the golf course property. So this paper street was included at that point to have an access from Roughner Road to connect into that golf course property. Now, I I can't document that for you. That's and it could be urban legend. But it's kind of strange when you look at the map that you see a paper street to town specifications kind of in the middle of a block. That says to me, connection in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'll research it. The planning board typically does provide subroads to large parcels so as not to landlock them in the future. But I'll see what I can find on that. I have not had a chance to email you guys the results of our internal review, but the engineering and highway department did want to make sure that that road stays in the middle of the right of way.
Okay. Even though we're only going to put utilities on one side?
Yeah, yep.
Is there some reason that they need that? Because what do we talk, twenty-six, we're looking at thirteen feet of nothing going on on the one side and utilities in the other? Follow me?
Yeah, they're concerned, I think, about precedence, also in the future when they're doing maintenance. It's typical for the road to be in the center, and their guys know a certain distance that they can manage. And most of them don't have subdivision maps with them, so the assumption is from edge of pavement, and it would be problematic to have it so close to one lot line.
That is something that can be discussed at any engineering meetings or with the TDE.
And we'll take another look at it.
All right.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, I think maybe now that we're doing technical things, maybe Laura, you could include me and David on at least emails.
So and I'm I'm just trying to have a regular engineering highway meeting and bring up planning projects, but when we have specific meetings, I can definitely
Sure.
include you guys.
But David, that makes sense, right?
I would be I would be happy to involve me involved with that at any point.
I think he
Well, if you're talking to me too, I would I would like to be.
Yeah, it was that. It was that David, that that David, but that David, sorry.
I thought it was, I think, you know, just looking back at my notes here, you know, I started a couple of things. But one thing was interesting is that I think we had one speaker say that the traffic wasn't bad now, but no, our past meetings, the traffic was considered bad. You know, like I said, I've driven over there just again yesterday. And, you know, depends, obviously, what time you go by. I mean, I don't know if you guys live over there, but it depends on what time you go by, you know, if it's whether it's schools letting out or works letting out. But every time I went by, you know, probably in the middle of the afternoon, like two, two to four o'clock, there was very few cars over there, you know?
It's more the it's more the runway.
Yeah.
It's more that it's so straight and people go a little too.
Yeah, and like I mentioned, that's, you know, that if that's an existing problem, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, maybe it was last meeting or meeting before, I said, it's people that are speeding are our neighbors. It's us. So think about that when you drive in another neighborhood, because, you know, it's it's not somebody else. It's it's us, you know, we gotta
Well, I know Mr. Party's here tonight. Maybe we can get a speed sign installed on Roughner Road and
But the other thing
We, there is one. There is one. There is one installed.
Is there one there now?
Yeah, more permanent solar one. I don't know.
Oh, it's the solar one. I'm thinking about maybe one of them.
Oh, mobile.
And then and park a cruiser there.
Billboard.
Yep.
Uh, the other thing.
Every neighborhood wants that.
Well, maybe just until
Just about every neighborhood.
Change of behavior.
Think there also the thing was that somebody actually said that, you know, we shouldn't go this far, dismiss the application. You know, obviously, we need to take the application through the process. And that's where we had the presentation from the planning office a couple of times, reviewing what the process is for an average density development. So we're we're going to follow the process. We're not going to dismiss it.
Thank you for that.
You know, so we got to follow the process. And I was quoted as saying that it's one of the hardest projects, so therefore it should, if it's that hard, it must be no good. And that's that's not what I did say is hardest. It is one of the hardest projects. So is the key one that we just got through. And so was monuments or what do you call that? Mansion Square. So was Windsor Drive.
You've just been doing this so long.
There's lots of hard ones.
And I'm going to go back when you and I did Hillside Commerce Park.
Hillside Commerce Park.
That wasn't
Yeah.
Looked upon by the neighborhood very fondly, so.
Yep, so it's, you know, I I understand. I understand it. It's but hardest part is is what we're here for, so. I wish they were all easy.
Chairman Walsh, I did write down questions. I know you guys probably didn't have a chance to read all of the comments yet. But we don't always get to have the back and forth, so if 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 there's a couple, there's a couple of planning process questions that I'd be happy to just put on the record for anybody listening if you don't mind me taking the time. There was, I I and I started them. There was a couple e-mails and questions from the public hearing that I think hopefully we can answer. One of the questions, would would there be a traffic study so surrounding residents can understand the impact of this development? I believe that the applicant has submitted some traffic data. We can use the TDE to determine if that's sufficient. But yeah, we do collect data on traffic to understand the impact on the development of the residential system. What will be the mitigation for all the tree removal? We do typically go in and try and save as many trees as possible. After that, we do require planting plans, and typically, if you're clearing this much, you would have to do street trees even off-site. So I know we've taken a pretty hard stance on mitigating for tree removal. How will the surrounding neighborhood screening be maintained or improved? Again, it's early in the process, and it's this is the recommendation on the special use permit, but potentially you guys could look at adding plantings to the buffer, too, like evergreen planting, something that could be discussed. We do look pretty heavily at the buffers. Another list of questions I saw was he asks, is it legal for a residential home to have three sides of the property be surrounded by roadways? I don't believe that's prohibited by code. I do believe that has an impact. A question on the cul-de-sac, I do, I think we talked about that. The town standard tries to keep it to five hundred feet, but we'll have the town designated engineer look into all of the codes. Clark Clark has started that as one of the first things for the town designated engineer to really weigh in on. Again, independent review of the long-form environmental impact statement. We will have the town engineer look at that. The Conservation Advisory has council has also been going through that piece by piece and has a meeting on April third. The town engineering sewer and water study completed. Has that been completed? It has not. I know we've talked about that that needs to be done. We can decide on timeline. It I mean, it has to be done. The financial burden on the sewer water system expansion, Niskuna tries pretty hard to make sure that water sewer system expansions are collected and accounted for and paid for by the developer. So as part of the things that come out of the town engineering water and sewer studies is if we're at capacity, what needs to be done to mitigate the impact of the development, and that is paid by the developer. And have the town conservation advisory council and tree council completed their reviews? They have not. I think that the CAC is getting ready to do a recommendation to the town board on April third. The tree committee, I think, has been waiting for better weather and kind of honing in on the proposal that the board was going to work with. But I know that the developer has offered to do a sidewalk, so I'll try and get them out there. I don't have final reviews on either of those.
Laura, if I might, with the snow and the rains that we've had, if we could wait maybe into the middle of April so things dry out a little bit, because even walking on the golf course right now, right now, it's really wet, so.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, the tree council, they do everything from negative twenty degrees, which they really have done to wetlands and
As long as, as long as they got boost, then go on.
Yeah, I think it's good whenever they're ready to go, Laura.
Yeah.
Laura, there's one other question I think that keeps coming up that we never addressed since you're doing it. It came up again today. The planning board contacting the school district.
Oh, that's been up, yes. Um, no, but I will try and do. I will try and do that for the next meeting.
Well, I mean, we've had a history. Well, we do have a history of contacting the school district with no response.
Um, I know, but I don't mind reaching out to them and asking them. I, they actually, they they will contact me occasionally. It's not very often, but when they do, I'd say it's almost like maybe every two years, they do a reanalysis of the number of children that they are expecting, and they do reach out to me and ask for pending development. Some of that development hasn't occurred, and sometimes we have new developments. They kind of keep track of it, so I don't mind reaching out. They they do have a way of keeping track of it. But I haven't asked them specifically about about this one. They don't.
And I'll support Laura now because I have sit, I've sat in meetings with the school superintendent to discuss, you know, upcoming projects so they can take that into consideration in their planning. So something we try to do. Obviously, residents have a concern. They could also bring it to the school board so that they understand their concern also.
How many young families?
Because Well, based on who are getting interest from for the townhouses, I'm going to say that's zero impact because they're either singles or empty nesters or young couples at this point. I'm assuming ten houses, average household, I think, is two and a half kids. So maybe twenty-five kids added to the school system between K and twelve. Call it thirty, call it forty. I don't see it being a significant impact, but
I think you may get even fewer.
Yeah, I I'm guessing, obviously, but, you know, whatever school district needs, we provide.
And the other thing, Laura, to your to your point about questions, a lot of the concerns that we heard are works in progress because, again, pretty per the the process that we have to follow, we don't resolve everything now. You know, we still got to come back to if the town board grants the the special use permit, we still got to work through all this stuff. It's not, this isn't the final, you know?
Yeah. Yes.
So Laura, timing wise, we're looking to go through our findings discussion and everything else. When is this going to be, the seventeenth?
Um, yes, so the I guess there's two paths forward. Based on the comments we heard from the public hearing, you guys could call for a resolution for recommendation to the town board. Or based on the comments we heard from the public hearing and us hiring the TDE, we could on the seventeenth prepare findings and look at the findings from the TDE and then call for a resolution at the next meeting. I think our timelines work either way.
Yeah, I'd recommend the second option, David. What do you think?
Mr. Khan, if I could, just because you've only got one meeting in April, and it's the seventeenth, and with the town board only meeting once a month, if we don't take action until the first Monday in May, I'm looking at May twenty-third, I believe, for town board. If there were a way that we could address the comments and and ask for a resolution on the seventeenth, can I get on the April twenty-third town board meeting? Because I still have to do presentation meeting and then a public hearing, right?
Right. I mean, the town board is going to call for a public hearing at the one meeting, so as you're
Right, but it's May, but if I have to wait till May for the first meeting, then on June for public hearing. So that making the seventeenth the resolution meeting saves me potentially four to five weeks.
Easily.
Yeah. If there's any way you could consider that, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I personally, I think we can. Yeah, but you know, because we have three weeks between, and I know the planning department has a lot of work and Mr. Henry, but we got three weeks, so if we can at least try, right?
Yeah, we are planning to have the TDE comments by the next meeting. But I but I mean, it will, that would be
I I I think I think I think we'll be rushing things to actually do the TDE comments and our findings and a resolution all in one meeting.
Well, question. Do we really want to be addressing TDE comments before we even know if the town board is going to approve it?
I do think that they're pertinent to some parts of the
I understand, but I I'm not going to start running up a bill if I don't know that the town board is, because those TDE comments, as you know, get pretty involved.
Yeah. They're going to be commenting on I think, though, if I can interject, I'm pretty positive the town board is going to want the TDE comments, so they're
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Since there's a question on really basic elements like sewer and water, it drives it forward for me.
Okay.
Normally, I'd be fine waiting on the TDEs. But those are really big questions.
Yep. And I don't know if we're the town is in a position to give me a qualified quantified answer either at this point. We think we have a pathway to make it work, but it also involves New York State DEC. So the TDE can make suggestions and recommendations, but I don't know that we're going to have answers.
They can tell if it seems feasible or not.
Yep. Well, Matt's already told us.
If it's not feasible, you don't have a project either.
But we still have work that we have to do collectively.
Laura, does the TD show up with his comments, or does he just submit comments?
Um, I would say most of the time they submit comments. We have had them come occasionally. If there was a particularly technical review or you guys had some questions for them, we've had both the town engineering and the TDE come to meetings before.
It just seems like a involved project. It might be something to consider to have the other questions that may pop up, just
So we'll probably get a five-page comment letter from him that we'll have to address.
Yep.
Actually, I mean, if if I may, I think at this point, I'm totally fine with a TD reviewing this project. I mean, if I was the TDE, I was looking at this, there's really not that much they can comment on. And and I I think that they could have some comments, and I I just don't think it's going to be much. And I don't think it would really hold you guys up from forming resolution.
Yeah, I mean, the TD comments at this point aren't the complete comments because we only got, we only have a preliminary site plan.
Right.
However, I do think I do think that we need to give this a tremendous amount of thought and take all those inputs in. And I think, Mr. Sweet, doing something faster here, I don't think is going to be wise for the long run.
Well, I mean, it's just unfortunate you've only got one meeting in April.
And then the monthly for the town board, I mean.
Right, understood, but I think I think it's worth the it's worth the care to put into it.
The other option is, you know, again, and I I'm just going to throw it out there, is you you call for a tentative, we see if we get the TDE comments in. We, you know, we got to work on, you know, if we draft up the the referral, like the one we went through tonight ahead of time.
Have it prepared.
And have it prepared, we can at least, you know, see for there and and say no, and and then
I would appreciate that.
I mean, I mean, I would, I would, I would recommend that just because of the
So I'll 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 defer to Dave, but I'll say with all due respect, Chairman Walsh, I don't think that that's the right thing to do with this.
I don't actually think it'll change their timeline. I am not comfortable bringing the project to the town board in April. That's, I I but I am comfortable.
That meeting's in a month, though, Laura.
But I mean, we we haven't even really dived into the TD or drafted the comments. Like, I wouldn't I wouldn't recommend putting it on the town board for the end of April. In which case, I can bring it up at the first of May prior to the planning boards, you know, making a recommendation so that it's in the pipeline. But I think actually it would be brought to the town board in May in either timeline case.
It might be in better shape to go to them. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. As I'm saying, I mean, Elena can defer to me.
Understand the applicant's exposure. If I'm spending all that time with the TDE and I'm waiting for my first town board meeting in May and my public hearing won't be until June, and I've addressed all the TDE comments and we get denied, to me, that doesn't seem to be a reasonable process.
I mean, that's the process that
Well, one 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 way is that when we get the comments, right, or you get the comments, there are some that are going to be significant and some that aren't, right, that we can resolve later. So I wouldn't spend the time. My view is you don't respond to all of them. You respond to the ones that are important to the town board, to this board. For instance, you know, is Rosendale sewer connection feasible? And is that going to, you know, doable with whether it's grinder pumps or pumping station or whatever? That's an important one, right? We heard that from the public, right? So I don't think we need to focus on
And I'd like to reiterate what, you know, the town attorney said, right, the the town board is going to want us to do this.
I I think that's fine. I just don't think that we're going to get TDE comments and
Agreed. I I I Agreed. I I I hear what you're saying, but we'll see what those comments are.
What I'm saying is I don't think this plan is gonna fundamentally change based on the TV comments. I think the only thing that would change what you guys are acting on is if the TV says you cannot do this project.
We are gonna live through the reality of getting those inputs, right? I do wanna remind you, since, you know, I wouldn't have brought it up, and Mr. McPartlin brought it up before, there was one piece of data that had the town board reject the planning board's recommendation. One piece of data, one single number. There were there were fifty things that were talked about, but it came down to one single number that had them reject the recommendation that we made for Keltz Farm. So the point I'm making with it is that we've got to live through the process. We've got to give it the time that it needs. We've got to see the data. We've got to see the comments. We've got to see the math behind it and engineering behind it to the best of our ability and be able to then tell the town board from our findings, here's a recommendation or a negative recommendation.
And then maybe a suggestion, if you, Mr. Khan, Mr. Darpino, Laura, Dave and I could review the TDE comments in their totality and decide which ones you believe are most important for us to address.
Definitely.
And then we focus on those.
That's why I said I think now is the point in time where, you know, if.
And as I was just saying, you don't need to address them all and spend the money.
Still gonna push me to June for public hearing, but.
But the other thing, too, is I think we need to, you know, work on the the recommendation like we did tonight, obviously sooner. And we can maybe maybe put that, maybe we can start that for the next meeting. Uh, because, you know, it'll give the public and the applicant an opportunity uh when Harris talk about it to say, hey, you missed this or.
I I definitely think in the next meeting, we should be discussing findings.
All right.
We should be discussing, right?
Okay.
Okay. No, we'll, yeah.
Yeah, set away, yeah. You know where I stand.
I guess. So there were a few things that I did since the last meeting. I asked the planning department to give us a little bit more information on chapter two twenty and the average density development, which Laura was able to answer some questions. The other thing I did was I went back to a couple proposals previous where you did the several iterations that showed the development of the club. There were great great aerial photos that showed the development of of the neighborhood.
Yeah, nineteen twenty-two, forty-two.
Correct.
Yeah.
And you could see, moving to the east, everything expanded.
Yep.
So I know that there's a natural progression through neighborhoods and, you know, where the demarcation lines of where development stops. And I'm gonna come back to the fact that it it would be great if we could find a secondary connection to connect it, to make it part of the neighborhood. And I don't wanna see a house come down. I think that's 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 not a good precedent, but the cul-de-sac may be the end-all of this development. If this gets approved, that that's the termination point. I mean, we may come up to say, okay, look, you just can't connect, whether it cuts through the club or it just the landscape over near fourteen, you know, we we don't wanna start taking houses down in order to make connectivity. But, you know, looking at this, if the average density development doesn't get approved at the town board level, are you prepared to come back with another plan to start the process over with single-family homes? And this, now here's where I'm going with this. The the aerial view that I see is that these lot sizes are very small compared to the general size of the property, the homes. So if it means some smaller lot sizes or larger lot sizes or whatever it is with a reduction in in the townhomes, which you go back to R1, and you have a mix of R1 single-family homes, is is that something that you would do if for some reason this thing goes down the line and doesn't get approved by the town board?
I, as I stand here, I would say to you, it's probably something we obviously would would consider and wanna consider rather than totally abandoning the project. Just another thought for you, if we were to show a future connectivity point off of that cul-de-sac, like that became a bend in the road, hypothetical. Thirty years from now, the golf course is sold. That road could be extended. Or reconfigured. Become parting part of a bigger neighborhood again, so that we don't show it as an absolute forever termination, but an opportunity to be able to continue off of that. That'd be something we easily could do. You know, we did do that one other overlay, too, where Dave compared the density of like blocks of Roughneer and Waymer.
Oh, right, yeah, that's what I was looking at.
We were looking, because we've got to dedicate so much land to green space, yeah, the lots do get smaller, but when you look at the total density of similar tracks, we're no different than another block on Roughneer or block on Hawthorne, or it's just you've got.
Yeah, so I've not even reiterated it today, right? It still rounds to twenty houses in that block.
And.
Someone, one of the comments from the public came in today. It rounds to twenty houses on that block.
Yeah, so on a fourteen-acre parcel, it's it's but we certainly can talk about future connectivity.
Lots are quite a bit smaller than the surrounding.
Agreed.
Well, they are, because we've got we've got the green space requirement.
Because the ADD.
One of the frustrating things listening to the Roughneer Road people is they wanna preserve as much green space as possible, but then they argue for this traditional single-family development, which eats up a lot of that green space. And.
Well, I don't let's say I don't think they're arguing for the single-family develop.
Arguing for no develop.
A couple of them have.
Well, I would agree. They were saying consistent with the actual Rosendale neighborhood. And that would that would lend itself.
Our one full-size lots, eight thousand square foot.
And houses like theirs, which you can't build.
And that's and that's where we follow the letter of the law in the process. We show a map of twenty-two single families with minimum eighteen thousand square foot lots. The reason that the lots end up having to be smaller is because of the green space environment and the ADD.
I'm gonna I'm gonna say to the public, you know, that they just need to study that one a little more carefully and rethink it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I I mean, I think it goes to what you guys have to balance in your recommendation to the town board. Um, you know, I think a lot of the concerns you heard are harmony with the existing neighborhood. And I remember Mr. Jack Diopino at the last meeting said, I think it would be important to make sure that the homes, if this were to go through, were
aesthetically.
You know, varied and hopefully compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, and I think it's something to think about, is look at the single-family plot and look at the average density development and weigh the pros and cons. And I do think a couple, and I can lay it out for you, but there was a couple mentions of some of the codes that you want to look at in your recommendation. There is a whole nother section in average density development that we should probably put in our findings. So I can send you those questions ahead of time, but I mean, they are, there is similar language to the special use permits that you gotta think about. I know I I don't know if it was spoken tonight. I think it was. Um, a decision on whether or not um we would take parkland fees, parkland in lieu of that could potentially change the number of lots if you were requiring the parkland to be set aside for this subdivision. So some of the conversations that we normally have later are probably worth having now.
And some people were insistent that the average density development let them put more homes in. It doesn't.
You guys, I wanna get away from what the people said and, well, you know, it what the conditions, the things that they bring up are important, but I I don't want our conversations to tend towards what can we do to make that that happy? I think we heard very strongly that there's a concern on character of the neighborhood, so I really think that that's important for us to explore.
Exactly.
And, you know, we've heard a lot of concerns about the preservation of natural and scenic qualities of open space. I really think that's important for us to explore, but in our world, so let's pull up the code.
Yep, no, I agree.
No, thank you, Laura.
Section five and section six is where the ADD is just specifically called up.
We don't need to go back and forth with specific comments.
Yeah.
What I'm saying.
I agree, I agree, Laura.
Things need to highlight that they don't get more units for this. What they, well, the town gets instead and the residents is that you do get more green space, more preservation of wildlife and all of that. It's not a ploy to get more housing in.
Yeah, that, I mean, the average density code does not allow more units than is allowed under a single family.
Correct. And Laura, just one additional point of clarification on the architectural side of things and the compatibility. I we have submitted um renderings of the proposed townhouse with Mr. Darpino's suggestion to swing the garages to the side, which we were able to make work. We're expecting and anticipating that every one of the ten single families are gonna be custom-built. We're not looking at going in with three styles and building the same three styles over ten lots. Each one of the homes will be the buyer's choice as a custom-built home. So a little different, maybe even than some of the newer subdivisions that are being built, where you might have five or six styles to choose from. We're looking at each of the ten lots being a custom-built.
Yeah.
Style, style that the.
It can be custom, as long as they they work together. They're harmonized, because I've seen where people buy a lot and they put up a house that doesn't go with all the other ones around it, whether, you know, throwing their money away or the other extreme.
Hey, drive-through Windsor. There's a great example.
I would. Where's the conversation though?
Contemporaries, Tudors, Colonials.
If all ten of the townhomes are the exact same townhome unit.
Well, they're different only from the standpoint that we're gonna put one-story units together and two-story units together. And there are only six buildings, so there'll be three, probably three of each.
But it may still even be worth looking into different roof lines or something on each of them.
Wouldn't wanna get into creating all those architectural plans, but we certainly could deviate.
No, I don't think we need to take the architectural points right now.
Conversation.
The the, yeah, that's a.
Way too far down the road.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You can, so you can sit on the river's ledge.
Ms. Gold does bring up a good point. There's there's not a net gain for right the number of houses that you could potentially put on property. It's just.
Green space.
And I know you that you know this number, but there is a there's a specific number of units that you can build to turn a profit on the development that you have to do with the infrastructure and the soft cost investments. So I know you know what that magic number is. There's probably a minimum number. And if for any reason this gets modified, whether it's through this board or the town board or whatever it is, that's where that threshold would be. Whatever we come back with to look at what the final plan would be, you know, we're gonna be looking at a lot of items of maximizing space, characteristics, connectivity. I I think having any type of walking paths in there, whether you in connecting the country club makes sense. If people are worried about golf balls, then. And I've golfed at the course before, and I'm an okay golfer. I can tell you, there's not ball spread everywhere. No, there's.
There aren't.
This is a higher level golf. So it's, you know, the these things that you that you've done with the connectivity and how you can relate to the neighborhood is a is is something that really should be thoroughly, thoroughly, thoroughly explored. And just to the point where it looks like it connects. It looks like it was a natural progression to the houses on Roughneer. And and that's where really where I'm coming from, as far as how do you extend a neighborhood and make it look like it was intentional? Not this is the final last resort of how you slap on something to the end.
Yeah, okay.
And and we have, and luckily, Miss Kuna does not have that, but we, as you heard from, you know, other people talking, and we've done this exploration, at least when we, like the Com Plan Committee members and Architecture Review Board, we look at things in a manner of, okay, what are other municipalities doing that aren't beneficial long term? And we don't wanna duplicate
That's right.
some of those, some of those developmental patterns.
Yeah, okay.
This is just one thing, too, that I heard, and I will have to go into the EEF and look. Um, but did you wanna address the concerns for the hours of construction?
Oh, yeah, that's that's standard fill-in-the-blank, seven to five, seven days a week. I I guarantee you, they're not gonna be working on Sundays, and in the in the fall and winter, they're not gonna be working on Saturdays probably either. And it's gonna be a question of how is the project sequencing? Uh, you might be framing one house at a time and maybe three townhouse buildings, but it's not gonna be, it's not that big a, I know it sounds, it's not that big a project.
Yeah, but I mean, however you capture it, then the EAF was what people were.
It's it's not gonna be two years of constant construction, five days a week, because of the way the sequence is gonna run. You build a house in four, a townhouse in four months, a single-family custom in five to six. So, and it's only twenty-two. I know I I'm trying not to minimize it, but it's not a five-year project that goes five, six, seven days a week. It's not gonna play out that way.
Like Harmon Grove, was that sixty-six units, Laura? Harmon Grove?
Harmon Grove is sixty-six.
Yeah. See, I mean, we can, we certainly, Laura, can modify those hours to, you know, that's just the standard you put in seven to five, seven days a week, but.
Well, if somebody wants to go painting on a Sunday, I don't think that's a noisy activity.
Well, our code actually doesn't require, doesn't allow you to work at seven AM on the weekends, but it is only eight AM, which.
Yeah, we can obviously, we'll change that.
Anything else? I think we have our.
Five more minutes, we make this a two-day meeting.
Yeah.
We have, I think we have our path forward, at least at least a short-term path forward, right?
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Thank you all.
Well, I just wanna thank you and 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 the public and the board members and the staff for the long meeting, and thank you for sticking out in Officer Party. Thank you for being with us. We appreciate appreciate you and residents. Thank you for sticking with us. It's not easy, I know.
Yep.
Y'all set?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, the only thing, um, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna like to close out quickly here, so the only thing I think, unless somebody's got something else, I think under reports, just need to mention, uh, Ms. Finn, and the probably all the board might not be aware of the decision for the Article seventy-eight regarding the Miller property. So you just might wanna let everybody know what happened there.
I didn't hear you.
Oh, we hear that.
The the Article seventy-eight.
Yeah, the Article seventy-eight on BR Holdings property came back and um, the court ruled against our ZBA and directed that fifty-four area variances be granted. Um, and is the town's intention to appeal that decision?
Which property is this again?
Miller, right there.
Yeah, Balltown Road between CVS and WRGB.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions at all?
No, but thank you, Elena, for all your hard work on that.
Thanks. Well, the hard work's continued.
Yeah, along the lines of Article seventy-eight, um, I I don't know where the Lou Leacy subdivision on Van Antwerp ever. I know that the our our decision was reversed by the court, but what whatever came of that, is that still being appealed?
Right now.
I wasn't here for that, but Laura, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the challenge is chose not to appeal it and.
Yeah, we chose not to appeal that, and the subdivision was granted.
Yeah, I think.
One home's built and the other one's in process.
Yep, foundations in and.
And we're still working.
I think the garage is gone.
Yeah, we're.
The garage is gone, and the the main house that was there is for sale.
I think you might have any offer already.
Interestingly, it was the same judge, and the two opinions do are kind of conflicting. So it provides same outcome, and then it overturned the town's decision, but it they're not consistent opinions. It's a little bit of an issue.
Interesting. Yeah, it's right down the road.
Judge Powers?
Yes, and that's part of the reason why the need to appeal is because, in my opinion, the decision's a little bit of a mess and doesn't really give us much guidance for the future.
Interesting.
The house that took for sale is not going to ever run.
Yep.
So in the subdivision, we we did actually put that the garage had to be in architectural harmony with the historic home. And it does require a rain garden to be built on that property, which will have to happen. But I don't think that our subdivision approval actually required a garage to be built. I think the assumption was that it would. Um, so I suppose there's a possibility that the rain garden and everything would have to go in, but they could, if they decided not to, I don't think they have to build a garage.
But most people want one.
Um, yeah.
Correct, so if the new owners decide to put up a garage, then it would be in keeping with our approval.
Yeah, which is what we put in our resolution. Yeah. You know, I you know, it goes to trying to be as specific as possible in our resolution, the new, the subdivider. Um, you know, on on the face of the conversations with the planning board, it sounded like the garage would eminently built be built after the other one was taken down. And so our condition only spoke to the aesthetics of the garage, not that it would be a requirement to be built. Um, I don't know that it would have changed our conversation that much, but it doesn't appear to be a requirement to be built from our subdivision.
Yeah, I don't think that's a big deal, actually.
So it isn't, but but the point is, it's a lesson learned that if we really expect it, then we better better write it down, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
It it was in the site plan that, you know, I guess I would interpret if a garage is built, it'll meet these standards, but it didn't say it had to be built.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
No, but I think, I mean, I'm okay with that. I think leaving that is an option for the bill for the buyer.
Well, no, if there's two or three houses in there, but they're all good. That one is not.
Yeah, I agree.
But it's for sale, so if somebody doesn't care.
So the buyer is gonna, the buyer, you know, that responsibility goes on the buyer, yeah. Who doesn't wanna garage up in the northeast?
Yep, exactly. And if they do want a garage, they'll have to pull out the resolution, and it'll be in keeping with the, you know. Okay, all right. All right, I'm gonna just say motion to adjourn, and thank you, everybody. Have a second?
Second.
All right.
I think you got.
They're all adjourned.
Aye. Seven seconds.
All right. All right, thank you again.